Really had a lot of fun here with the Red Hat Ladies today. Ladies at home, I encourage you to contact them and join them. You'll have a lot of fun. We'll see you next time on Aging Well in L.A.
Over the next century, railroad workers installed over 200,000 miles of tracks all over the country.
Rail was laid, bolted, and spiked down.
In the early days, trains were primarily used to transport goods and livestock. However, in May 1869, that all changed when the railheads of the Union Pacific and the Central Pacific Railroads finally met at Promontory Summit in Utah. People could now travel across the country in a matter of days, something that previously took weeks, sometimes months. In no time, plans were made for a train station in Los Angeles. Soon enough, construction began, and finally, in May of 1939, Union Station opened its doors to the public. The station took over service from La Grande Station and Central Station, and originally served the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe Railway, Southern Pacific Railroad, and Union Pacific Railroad, as well as the Pacific Electric Railway and Los Angeles Railway. Conceived on a grand scale, Union Station became known as the last of the great railway stations built in the United States. It was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Union Station was partially designed by John Parkinson and Donald B. Parkinson, who had also designed Los Angeles City Hall and other landmark Los Angeles buildings. They were assisted by a group of supporting architects, including Jan van der Linden. The structure combines Dutch colonial revival architecture, mission revival, and streamlined modern style with architectural designs such as the Eight Pointed Stars. The station's first timetable listed 33 arrivals and 33 departures daily. What people found here was more than transit. It was travel. It was train. With 16 tracks, Union Station quickly became a hub for citizens and stars alike. Union Station saw heavy use during World War II when troops were mobilized, as there were nearly 30,000 travelers who passed through Union Station daily. After the war, many soldiers returned from battle by train and were reunited with their families at Union Station. Trains were not only reliable, they were romanced. In those days, trains had names like Sunset Limited and the Super Chief, the big, powerful liner that coupled the coasts from Los Angeles to New York. Union Station also served as a popular location for filming and has been featured in movies such as Blade Runner, Dead Men Don't Wear Plaid, In the Mood, and Union Station starring William Holden and Nancy Olsen. Today, Union Station is completely revived. There are over 60,000 travelers who walk through the station daily, and it continues to undergo historical restoration. From all of us here at Metrolink to the Grand L.A. Union Station, happy 75th birthday. Here's to the next 75.
I'm an Ayengar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste.
In L.A. this week...
I'm Anna Margos. A $50,000 reward for information that helps police catch the killer in the fatal hit-and-run of a young woman. That's coming up.
These families in North Hollywood are the latest to receive free computers, thanks to the city's innovative computer recycling program. I'm Gil Reyes with a story next.
Find out the latest trends in all things artsy as the L.A. Art Show, one of the largest exhibitions, leaves its mark at the L.A. Convention Center. Coming up. Hello and welcome to L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. A tragic accident turns into a criminal case after a fatal hit-and-run leaves a woman dead on the street. The city is offering a $50,000 reward for the killer. Anna Margos has the story.
23-year-old Jacqueline Hernandez was on the way to a job interview last November when the unthinkable happened. If you watch the upper-left corner of this surveillance video, you see her cross the street just before she gets run over near Central Avenue and 12th Street downtown. Even two months later, her mother, her family, and her friends are still grieving.
Sing, sing, adios, mami.
She left without a goodbye mommy. It hurts so much. She was my baby, my everything.
How are you related to Jacqueline?
Oh, she was, um, we were together for six years and a half. She was my girlfriend, and, um, I don't know what to say.
Police say the driver was not speeding or doing anything illegal when Hernandez suddenly ran out into traffic in the dark trying to cross the street, and then she stumbled and fell. Unfortunately, once the driver hit her and took off, the accident turned into a crime scene.
That video shows the vehicle striking the young lady Hernandez and the vehicle stopping immediately right after that, and the male agent getting out from the driver's side and approaching Ms. Hernandez as she's laying down on the ground, looking at her, getting back in the car, and driving away.
Councilmember Jose Weisar's office is offering a $50,000 reward to help catch the suspect. Authorities say he is an Asian male, mid-40s, clean-cut, balding, and between 5'9" to 6' feet tall. His car is described as a late-model BMW 428i, gray or black, with silver stock wheels, and it could possibly have left front-end damage.
We're a bit concerned because of someone who had struck somebody to move on and not offer aid, not offer assistance.
We will actually, like, talk to you. We're not mad. We just want answers.
But there are no answers right now, just a lot of questions and even more memories. Along with his t-shirt, Hernandez's boyfriend made with her image on it. They were both planning to go to college together. Now, he'll be going alone. I'm Anna Margos for L.A. this week.
Anyone with information can call LAPD detectives handling the case at 213-486-0751. While the city remains committed to housing all veterans who find themselves homeless, while thousands have been saved in recent years, the city needs our help to find the hundreds still missing in action. Gil Reyes reports.
While it's hard to gain their trust sometimes, we're finding more of our homeless veterans taking advantage of supportive services like health care and housing. Back in 2015, our cameras rolled as many veterans took a chance and boarded shuttles headed for the once-troubled VA campus in West L.A. For years, the campus was accused of ignoring their needs, but since then, VA Secretary Robert McDonald says services here have vastly improved.
Just within the last two weeks, we now have same-day access to primary care and mental health care in every one of our nearly 150 VA medical centers. Early on in my tenure, I recognized that if we don't make progress in any veteran homelessness in Los Angeles, we won't make progress nationally.
The city of Los Angeles has long held the distinction of having the most homeless veterans of any city in the entire nation. At the same time, we've housed more homeless veterans. Over the past two and a half years, 8,000 have been housed in the city alone, thanks to local and federal governments. Still, much more needs to be done to house the 1,200 who remain on our streets. Apartment landlords are urged to be compassionate and accept veterans with housing vouchers in hand. While all of us are asked to help locate the roughly 1,200 military men and women sleeping on our streets on any given night, Navy veteran Edward Benford helps in that search.
Is it hard to find them?
Yeah, because being a vet myself, it's easy for us to be travel undetected.
Why would they want to do that?
Kind of not being treated well when we came back kind of makes us, you know, uneasy about recommitting ourselves to that.
Even though helping them, those who served our country, is the least we can do. In downtown L.A., I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
If you know of an unsheltered veteran, call 311 and help them get connected to health care, housing, and other services. Despite the progress being made in housing veterans and others who are homeless, as you just saw, many people remain without shelter. Anna Margos takes a look at how city workers deal with the growing challenges. Anna?
Yana, as these homeless encampments continue to mushroom and grow, city leaders are faced with a balancing act. Balance the needs of the homeless, together with the needs of citizens, to walk on safe and clean streets and sidewalks. Paul, who gave no last name, has built himself a small compound at the 110 Underpass on 39th Street. He may be homeless, but he's got a toilet that pours into a drain, a portable shower, a generator, electricity, and a TV, even an Xbox. But Paul is used to tearing it all down and putting it back up again. The Department of Sanitation makes a regular habit of power washing and cleaning out sidewalks in the homeless encampments.
It's good, but I mean, they could be a little more sensitive about it. These tents coming up and down, they're hard. Some of us are out here with females that are pregnant. My fiancee, she's pregnant.
We always have to spray the sidewalks. There's human feces, there's urine, there's rodents and other droppings. The last one, which was around Christmas time, we took approximately 2,000 pounds of bulky items and solid waste away. We took over 40 pounds of human waste.
And that's just in that one area?
In that one side of the sidewalk. That doesn't even speak to the piles of rats and cockroaches.
But the encampments are getting, if anything, more elaborate. Take the man known as Mr. Dice. He's built himself some glam bachelor quarters on 39th Street and has become quite a Facebook sensation. He's got a living room, a master bedroom, even guest rooms, which he rents out, as well as a toilet and a jacuzzi, complete with snacks. On the day we met him, he was putting his home back together after a sidewalk power wash. He offered to give us an interview, for a donation, that is.
Could I get a donation for this?
A donation?
We declined his offer.
He has been warned numerous times. It has, you know, it has been documented. He has denied housing.
But there's only so much city workers can do.
There are some restrictions that LAPD faces due to lawsuits.
But as you can see in this photo, there is no sidewalk left. And so anybody who's trying to use 39th Street to get to the park, to get to a museum, to get to the Coliseum for a sporting event, has to walk into the street.
On this day, his domestic setup was not quite complete, but even so, some of his belongings rolled into the street, causing a bit of a roadblock and commotion. Many residents have already complained about this encampment. But most homeless residents agree there is no glamour in living on the street. Paul says he's trying to get himself and his fiancee into housing.
So you work?
Uh, yeah, I do security. I refuse to stay in this position.
Yeah.
I refuse.
For now, cleaning and spraying up the sidewalk serves as a compromise in the tug-of-war between those who walk or drive these streets and those who use them as their home. I'm Anna Margos for L.A. this week.
As L.A. Sanitation works to meet the needs of all L.A. residents, the department is also moving full speed ahead with a new program that seeks to make those residents and our city more sustainable by changing the way trash is collected and processed. Rasha Goel explains.
Recycling in L.A. is about to get a major overhaul. City leaders recently approved a $3.5 billion waste hauling contract, which will split up the pickup duties among seven waste haulers. These haulers ensure that more trash is recycled and less trash is sent to landfills.
We're hauling in three zones within the city of Los Angeles, and our role will be to collect commercial, recycling from commercial businesses, as well as multifamily dwellings within the city of Los Angeles.
Athens Services is among the haulers that are part of the Zero Waste L.A. program, which is designed to address the 3 million tons of waste disposed annually by businesses and all of us.
We're moving to an exclusive franchise system for the collection of recyclables and solid waste from all commercial businesses.
The new system will replace an uneven and hodgepodge system where recycling, work conditions, and customer pricing and service varied from company to company. To help with the workload, L.A. Sanitation is encouraging small business owners to get on board as subcontractors.
Today's meet and greet is the first of nine events designed to allow potential subcontractors to meet with our Zero Waste L.A. franchise contractors.
Officials say these meetings give small businesses an opportunity to network and participate in the city's larger projects.
Today, we're here to meet Athens, to build a relationship and network with them, to understand how they are going to help small businesses in subcontract with them.
The remaining meetings are being held this week. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
For more on L.A. Sanitation's meet and greets, or for more information on the Zero Waste L.A., call Well, what do you do with outdated computers while you upgrade them for people in need? That's what the city has done, and families in parts of the valley are the latest to benefit. Gil Reyes reports.
Luisa Montahano brings home her family's new computer, and it's free.
It's going to help all of us because we don't have one, so this is something good for my kids.
Families in North Hollywood and Studio City, the latest to benefit from the city's Our Cycle L.A. program. Our Cycle takes outdated city department computers and, instead of throwing them away, refurbishes them for families in need. The city hired the nonprofit group Human IT to do the repairs.
Not only will have Windows 10, but a full office suite as well. We upgraded the inside this time around, so more RAM, faster processors, so faster machine, better overall experience for the end users.
The city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, launched the program two years ago. Since then, several communities have received the technology, with more to come.
In 2017, we can expect to distribute an additional 1,000 computers to families and children in need. Here we are in 2017. We're at a time where the internet is not just a luxury, it's essential to how people get work done, how they're educated, how they start businesses.
Councilman Paul Krikorian represents this section of the valley. Around 100 computers are handed out today.
Not having access to a computer is like not having access to a pencil and paper would have been when I was growing up. It's just impossible for kids to get an education and to participate in the economy of the 21st century unless they get some exposure to computers. But we know that for far too many families in Los Angeles, that's just not really accessible to them. And so that's why we've worked through many of the nonprofits, the faith community, our schools.
To identify those who need the most, like the LAPD's Jeopardy! After School program for at-risk youth.
They do a lot of activities, and part of it is doing homework, and we needed computers for that center, so this was a perfect fit.
We thank Paul Krikorian's office for that and all that they do to help programs like ours in the community.
Helping to bridge the digital divide. In North Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Heading over to the L.A. Convention Center as the L.A. Art Show recently rolled into town for the 14th time, and it just keeps growing. Anna Margos brings us the latest on L.A.'s biggest art show.
L.A. is already a trendsetter as a car culture and a movie mecca, so why not as an art maker? What started out as an art lover's pipe dream 14 years ago with 250 visitors is now drawing record crowds of as many as 70,000 people, and this year's L.A. Art Show is bigger and better than ever.
L.A.'s really responding to art, and the last couple of years have really, really been attracted to the show.
Among the novel things this year, Chinese ink drawings and Tan Se Qua, a Korean art that is blowing up everywhere. There is also a growing Latin American section, which includes performance art like this. It symbolizes our current immigration woes. This artist performs naked on a clay bed with drops falling on his head.
He was performing there as a part of the desert and working with the idea of the borders, and it can be about crossing borders, about immigration, especially in this area, and...
Is that what the clay means?
Yes, it's the sand, it's the desert, yes.
And then there's this tranny virtual reality experience.
This is the multi-century installation Be Boy, Be Girl. And in Be Boy, Be Girl, you can experience what it is to be, or a boy, or a girl. So you can choose what gender you are.
Artwork like this, a sign of our times, in this case, are two major political parties eating each other alive. Video paintings like this run on a continuous loop and are getting more and more popular because you can frame and mount them on a wall using a computer, or now, even an iPad.
Well, I love the movement. I love the colors. I love the ramifications, the meaning of it.
Well, I think what's important today is emotion, and I believe that art creates emotion. You know, it creates hope, it creates curiosity, it creates happiness, and especially today, we need that in such an uncertain world.
Whether you like multimedia, mural scenes, recreations, performance art, sculpture, or just plain old art on a wall, the L.A. Art Show keeps showcasing the latest and trendiest of art in an ever-changing culture. I'm Anna Margos for L.A. this week.
And this is the first year that local museums also participated in the L.A. Art Show with exhibits of their own. Well, over on the west side, it was another annual event, but this one brings L.A. kids together to compete in a friendly game of ball while honoring a civil rights leader. Gil Reyes takes us there.
For players like Arlene Arovalo, the experience is beyond fun.
Because you get to meet other people, and also you get to bond with other people, not just with your teammates.
Children from different communities playing on the same side at the eighth annual Dream Games. More than 100 kids are drafted onto combined teams and learn that differences in gender, ethnicity, religion, and economic status all disappear when the whistle blows. Arlene's dad is a big supporter of the Dream Games, honoring the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Get all the communities together, work together for a better, better world, you know, yeah. And that was his dream, and we're glad to be participating in this, be part of his dream.
And we celebrate the diversity throughout the city by bringing kids together and making sure that they play with kids that they ordinarily wouldn't have a chance to play with.
We see more affluent kids from West L.A. teaming with kids from South L.A. Latino youth from Cypress Park passing the ball to African-American children from Lemur Park, and they're all having fun. The nonprofit group Friends of West L.A. and the Department of Recreation and Parks organized the tournament.
I'd like to think that the dream is starting to become a reality, and Lemur Park is part of that, because there's a vision, and then there's a dream, but there's also the making it beyond a dream and making it something real, and I think this is something that's real.
Making great strides on an even playing field. At the Dream Games in Westwood, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
To get the game scheduled or learn how to participate, call the Westwood Recreation Center at 310-473-3610. Well, Martin Luther King was also recognized on the other side of town as volunteers gathered to give back to one local school. Anna Margos has more.
Frontside, backside, front row.
A good warm-up never hurts when you're revving up for a full day of volunteering in the name of Martin Luther King Jr.
I think just that power of community, and I think that's really embodied by the ideals of King, for people to come together, young and old, different backgrounds, different beliefs, but to come together in the idea that service can make a difference.
Many people think of today as a day off, but we all know, everybody in this room, that today is a day on.
More than 700 volunteers joined the group City Year for a Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. They helped spruce up and paint Crenshaw High School in South L.A. on a day commemorating the late civil rights leader.
Studies have shown that when students can come to a beautiful campus to learn, they're more engaged and they do better in school. So today, we're going to come beautify the school.
But City Year does a lot more than make schools pretty. It's got an even bigger goal, to help students stay in school.
So the whole goal is really to help reduce the high school dropout rate around the United States, and the way that we do that is we get a committed group of young, idealistic people for a year to serve in schools as tutors, mentors, and role models, working directly with those students who are at risk.
I think it's really important that the kids here know that they're important and that they're valued, even in communities where it might not seem like that.
Today, it may seem like it's just a bit of paint here and there, but the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service helps spotlight the power of volunteering, whether it's for a day or for a life, and how it builds stronger communities. I'm Anna Margos for L.A. this week.
And it wasn't just Crenshaw High getting the beauty treatment. A nearby South L.A. neighborhood also got a good sprucing up as residents came out to help make their community a better place. Rasha Goel has more on folks who didn't mind getting their hands dirty for a good cause.
A lot of people who work hard who are still not able to, you know, do home improvements and these types of organizations that come out to the communities, I think it's a wonderful thing.
Iliana Dillard's home is among those receiving some TLC and home improvement. She feels fortunate to have the added help.
My husband Glenn was getting ready to, you know, try to do some things around the house. He passed away last year, so now it's just me, my son, and my daughter, and so I feel very blessed to have this.
It's all part of South L.A. Neighborhood Pride Day to revitalize the community and help improve the quality of life for residents.
What we're doing today is beautifying a block, doing some house painting, minor repair work, planting some garden beds.
It's super cool working together and painting and gardening, and it's super fun.
The Neighborhood Housing Services of L.A. County brought together the volunteers to clean up the Canterbury Knoll section of South L.A. These events are held once a quarter and done with multiple partnerships.
We're happy to be here with NHS and all the organizations, Police Department, Fire Department, everybody helping us out, getting this work done.
Homes are selected based on their condition and maintenance.
It takes all of us to make a community great, and we see Neighborhood Pride Day as a catalyst for that, as a tool that we can use to encourage people to participate, get engaged, stay involved. For the low-income families that we're assisting, they probably wouldn't do these repairs if we didn't come and help do them.
It's good to see people out here doing stuff. It's, it feels good.
It's just really like nice that we can help this community and make it look prettier.
Pride Day also encourages residents to learn about existing resources and programs that can help them buy, fix, or keep their home. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Other Pride Day events have taken place in Compton, Pacoima, and Sun Valley. Well, after years of delay, a new Frank Gehry development may soon be taking shape in downtown L.A. A family-owned business steeped in local tradition is recognized by city council, and we are pleased to unveil a new look for our city council meetings coverage. All these stories in City Beat. An elaborate commercial and residential development designed by Frank Gehry could finally get off the ground after a Chinese builder put $290 million into the venture. The complex is planned to be built across the street from Gehry's signature Walt Disney Concert Hall. Construction of the Grand Avenue complex of condominiums, apartments, shops, restaurants, and a hotel has been delayed several times since 2004, but this time with help from the Chinese subsidiary, Related, will finally be able to proceed with construction on the $1 billion project expected to begin next year. A family-owned business was recognized by city council for its contributions to the Los Angeles community. San Antonio Winery, run by the Riboli family, remains the longest and largest producing winery in Los Angeles. With 100 years and four generations of wine-making under its belt, it remains an essential component of the city's cultural and historical landscape. Still at its original location on Lamar Street in Lincoln Heights, it is one of the last few wineries still in operation, representing the rich wine-making tradition of greater L.A.
For 100 years, Angelenos have been walking into San Antonio Winery and have been made to feel at home by a family who has welcomed them into their home.
We're also proud to say we're Angelenos. We're proud that the Angelenos and the immigrants of Los Angeles have supported us through all these years.
Viewers were introduced to upgraded city council meeting video coverage this past week on L.A. City View Channel 35, as the equipment used to cover L.A. city council meetings was replaced over the recent holiday recess. Eight new high-definition cameras, along with a new control room, were installed and tested in just a few short weeks. The new system, along with refreshed graphics and a new city council opening... The new system, along with refreshed graphics and a new city council opening, debuted at the first city council meeting of 2017. You can catch the new look for the L.A. city council meetings live right here on L.A. City View Channel 35 or online at lacityview.org. Celebrate the traditions of downtown L.A. during the third annual Night on Broadway. Enjoy all your favorite museums as they open their doors at no charge. And gear up in blue for the annual Dodgers Fan Fest. All this and this week's Things to Do. Councilmember Jose Huizar's successful Night on Broadway will take over downtown Los Angeles for the third year in a row. The festival offers something for all Angelenos and is expected to eclipse last year's attendance of more than 60,000 people. A mile-long stretch of Broadway between Third and Olympic Boulevard will be closed off and transformed for the free event, offering music, games, and activities for kids and adults. Art installations and one-of-a-kind experiences featuring hundreds of acts, including performances on 10 stages in the street and in six of Broadway's historic theaters. Night on Broadway takes place on Saturday, January 28th, from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. For more, visit nightonbroadway.la. Clear your calendar for museums free-for-all. More than two dozen museums in the L.A. area will offer free admission, not including specially ticketed exhibitions or parking, allowing local residents an amazing opportunity to check out the culture of their city free of charge. You can see anything from art to natural history and science. Participants for this year include many locations that are not normally free, such as the Natural History Museum, Lakma, Mocha, and Descanso Gardens, along with museums that regularly offer free admission, such as both Getty Campuses and The Broad. For more, visit socalmuseums.org. Beat the winter blues by putting on your Dodger Blues and head to Dodger Stadium for Fan Fest. Highlights include autograph sessions with current and former Dodger players and coaches, onstage player interviews, great photo opportunities, LADF yard sale, interactive activities and games for fans of all ages. The Fan Fest takes place on Saturday, January 28th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. Admission and parking is free, but you have to download a ticket to get in. Visit dodgers.com/fanfest. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Hi, I'm Kev from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
...
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, January 24th. I'd like to welcome you to City Hall to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and again, the public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Anglender, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Caretts, Cricorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Huizar moves. Mr. O'Farrell seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaino moves, and Mr. Blumenfeld seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I can have everybody please rise for the salute of our flag. I will, I will lead this salute myself. Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You know, before, before we start, members, I just want to, usually, we do announcements and things of that nature at the end of our council meeting, but I just want to acknowledge all of the women throughout this country and throughout the world for an unbelievable event that was held Saturday in this country and in other countries. I want to give a very, very special, yeah, give... A very, very special shout-out to our colleague and our friend, Nuri Martinez, for all of the work that you did to help with this march and the program for Saturday. Let's give Nuri a round of applause. And was just so proud of you and, and, and all of the women and the men who aided them, okay? We, we aided. They did it, we aided them. And, and to say that this, you know, from time to time, people reference the March on Washington for the past, you know, decades after decades. People will reference this forever. Fifty years from now, mothers will be telling daughters, and fathers will be telling sons about what the women of this country did last Saturday. So let's give one more round of applause for our America. Let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there's a request to continue Items 1P and 1W for two weeks to February 7th.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Continue.
The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the following items be received and filed: 1C, D, H, N, T, and V, as the liens have been paid in full; and Item 1A, as the property was determined to be exempt due to an ownership change.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Continue.
Items 1 through 10 are items noted for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Cards on Item 1.
Okay, let's hold that item and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Items 11 through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee reports for Items 11, 14, 22, 23, and 24 have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, Mr. Huizar?
Number 17, special, please.
17, we'll hold for Mr. Huizar. We'll hold 14 as well. Um, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. And I'm now told we want to hold, Madam Clerk, 13 and 21 as well. So let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Continue.
Items 25 through 37 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Price?
President, I move to adopt the CAO report for items 27 and 28, please.
Okay.
And a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Twenty-seven and twenty...
Cards?
Uh, would you like to vote on items 27 and 28 first?
Do we have cards on them?
Uh, yes, we do have card on item 28.
Okay, we'll hold on 27. And let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Continue.
And there are cards on 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 36 and 37.
Let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll.
Thirty-five.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special. Presentations or general public comment.
Okay, so I'd like to call on our clerk. Where is she? Holly, if you please come to the, uh, center aisle. And welcome.
Good morning, esteemed and honorable council members. My name is Holly Lynn Walcott and I am your Los Angeles City Clerk. As you know, March 7th is quickly approaching and that's our next municipal election. We are a diverse city and as we grow in population, so does the need to provide languages assistance. This year, to fulfill census and Department of Justice requirements, we have added Kamai, which serves the Cambodian, Cambodian population. So our list of required languages is now up to 12, in addition to English. We heavily rely on seasonal staff to assist the language services required. Today, I would like to present to you this year's outreach team. This staff works simultaneously on three different programs. Translation and review of hundreds of election-related documents and material. They assist in recruiting multilingual poll workers. And they staff community events, voter outreach, and civic education. To give you a few of our details, I would like to introduce Ginny Pack, the Elections Division Manager.
Thank you, Holly. Good morning, council members. Thank you for letting us share a few minutes of today's meeting. I wanted to highlight some of the work that our outreach staff does each election year. Our bilingual outreach specialists focus on outreach to the various ethnic, monolingual communities in their native languages, such as Armenian, Farsi, Korean, Spanish, et cetera. Also, with our new expanded field staff this year, we are able to partner with additional organizations such as homeless service providers to reach out and register the indigent population. Additionally, staff are conducting mock elections at high schools and middle schools. We believe that in demystifying the process of voting through mock elections and education, that in the long term, we may build a more civically-minded youth. Finally, we continue to partner with all nine L.A. community colleges for events such as National Voter Registration Day and staff other community events throughout the city. This year also, for the first time, we have partnered with 18 different media organizations that will also assist us in getting the word out about elections. We have also secured 25 community-based organizations to partner with in community events and propagate information to their respective stakeholders. With both the media and community partners, we are able to serve the various ethnic communities in the city. We are extremely proud of our accomplishments. Thank you. Now, back to Holly.
Our bilingual outreach specialists have a quick message in the 12 different non-English languages that the city services. They are Armenian, Chinese, Farsi, Hindi, Japanese, Kamai, Korean, Russian, Spanish, Tagalog, Thai, and Vietnamese. Each one will, um, give their name, state that they are about outreach specialists, remind voters to vote on Election Day, March 7th, and the final message is, "Your voice, your city, your vote."
Hello, my name is Jamila Jabulani. I'm a field outreach specialist. I would like to remind voters to vote on Election Day, March 7th. Your voice, your city, your vote.
Hello, everyone. My name is Arthur Shishmanian. I'm the Armenian bilingual outreach specialist. Yes, I'm coming. Please, yes, let's go. We are calling for this. We are calling on this. We are calling on Marti Yotin. The Zane, the Kaka, the Kven.
Hello, my name is Sandy Yang. I'm the Chinese bilingual outreach specialist.
Hello, my name is Hirad Wahdat. I'm the Farsi bilingual outreach specialist. 我要让被拉的汉尼根亚当维克南， 在选举日，7月3日， 在拉吉里杀害他们。说你们的城，你们的城市，
Hello, my name is Sagar Suri and I'm the Hindi bilingual outreach specialist. 我想告诉你们， 选举日的7日， 请记住， 你的声音， 你的城市， 你的名字。
Hello, my name is Yukayama Moro. I'm the Japanese bilingual outreach specialist. 有权利的女士们， 3月7日的选举日， 请投票， 请回答。你的声音， 你的声音， 你的意见。
Hello, my name is Solina Li. I'm the Kamai bilingual outreach specialist. 我们是来自美国的， 我们是美国的， 我们是2003年， 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 我们是2003年，
Hello, my name is Eva Kim. I'm the Korean bilingual outreach specialist. 我是3月7日的选举日， 有权利的女士们， 请投票， 我告诉你们， 你的声音， 你的城市， 你的投票。
Hello, my name is Daniel Mark. I'm the Russian bilingual outreach specialist. 我是2003年， 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 你的声音， 你的声音，
Hello, my name is Griselda Quintanilla. I'm the Spanish bilingual outreach specialist. 我想提醒那些投票的人， 在选举日， 这7月3日， 他们的声音， 他的城市， 他的投票。
Hello, my name is Akeiro Tiangson. I'm the Tagalog bilingual outreach specialist. 我想告诉所有投票的人， 在选举日， 7月3日， 你们的声音， 你们的声音， 你们的投票。
Hello, my name is Samlad Bunskun and I'm the Thai bilingual outreach specialist. 我想告诉那些投票的人， 7月7日， 市市， 声音， 通过投票的人， 市市，
Hi, my name is Richard Jung. I'm the Vietnamese bilingual outreach specialist. 我想提醒那些投票的人， 在3月3日， 你， 城市， 你，
I would like to thank the council president and the council members for giving us this opportunity. As you know, the, um, after this year, the elections will switch over to the county to be held in even-numbered years, starting in 2020. And it's going to be more important, and as important and more important, for us to conduct outreach, to let citizens know, um, what's in it for them. Why should they vote for their council members? Why should they vote for, uh, issues that are on the ballot? So that's what my team is going to take on and we appreciate your support. Um, I also have other, uh, field outreach specialists behind me. I would like to thank them, but, uh, thank you for letting us speak today.
Thank you, thank you. Thank each and every one of you. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the multiple, uh, card, uh, portion, Luigi. Let's go, Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy. Mr. Murphy, go right ahead.
Yes, good morning. Uh, what items do I have?
You have items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, 1G, 1H.
All right. I support this, all these items. Item number one, I support it, thanks.
Okay, now you can have your general public comment. Give him his minute for...
Yes, Donald Trump is our president. I have a message for him. He ought to, he better do a good job. He should not deport anybody.
Mr. Walsh, John Walsh? Mr. Walsh, you have items 1A, 28, 29, 31, 32, and 37.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number one, Building and Safety, uh, as usual, doing a good job. I'm not one of those, uh, white guys that can't be, oh, you're all a bunch of crooks. I'm not that type. You have them already. 28, this is, uh, green space and affordable housing project. It's, uh, 2.8 million to the Community Redevelopment Agency of CRA LA. Well, CRA LA doesn't really exist anymore. We destroyed it via Jerry Brown, but it's the corpse of CRA LA, uh, that resists death. Number 29, and, uh, this is, uh, a reward information, as I said, shooting death of Ming Wong on December 28th, 2016, $50,000. Uh, again, uh, we have more, uh, unpaid rewards than any other city in America and you, and every single person who's been arrested for murder has alcohol in their body. And you, again, give everybody, every damn, uh, person that comes up here for an alcohol license, you give them alcohol license. We have more per square mile than any city in America. The blood of Ming is on your hands. Number, number 31, and, uh, that's Cultural Heritage, inclusion of Parker Center. We, historic cultural monument? You should tear it down and throw it away. It's, it's a symbol of racism, the Parker Historic Cultural Monument. Uh, and LAPD, which is much, much worse at that time than it is now. I don't need, it doesn't need to be a cultural monument. 32, uh, this is, uh, inclusion of, uh, Bob and Dolores Hope's estate is a historic cultural monument. That's what we should be, uh, using, what we should be declaring a cultural monument. And, uh, number 37. Number 37 is, uh, rental fees for the Los Angeles Convention Center, uh, for 7, 8, and 9. $6,000 rental fee, high school girls in foster care with dresses and accessories. The foster care scandal at, at the county, you're not involved in that, is horrific. And The Times, David Maharaj, the editor, will not do the full story. John Walsh, my minute. HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential, I'm telling you right now, measure S. Yes on S. Yes on S. Yes on S. We have to stop tearing down our cultural heritage, tearing down buildings, and putting up ugly skyscrapers. This is a chance, and I just want all the Jews here to realize that if this fails, there's a list of skyscrapers they're going to build, not in the black and Hispanic neighborhood, but in the Jewish neighborhood west of La Brea. They're just waiting for this thing to pass. And believe me, you're not helping the colored people by voting, uh, no. You're helping the, the Asian huge developers. No, yes on S, yes on S, yes on S. Don't think, yes on S, yes on S, yes on S. Oh, and one more thing, yes on S.
Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to item 14. We have a few, uh, public comment cards. The first speaker is Steve Diaz. Followed by Akili and Melanie Ochoa.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Steve Diaz and I am with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. We join Community Coalition, Black Lives Matter L.A., SCOPE, and the ACLU, and many others in expressing very serious concern about this initiative. And if this process moves forward as is, we would strongly oppose this ballot measure. We have been a leading organization in the citywide fight for greater police accountability, but this appears to be more about politics than good policy, more about those in power than the general public. This is, this is therefore even more concerning because it could mislead voters into thinking this is a true effort to create greater police accountability. We demand a complete evaluation of the police disciplinary process and a true public process with input from communities before presenting this ballot initiative. We, like thousands of folks in L.A., want greater police accountability and public safety. That is driven by our communities rather than by the, by the Los Angeles Police Protective League and their prior, policy priorities. But this ballot initiative won't create that.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Akili, followed by Melanie Ochoa and Patricia Guerra.
Good morning, members of the City Council. My name's Akili. I'm with Black Lives Matters L.A. And we want you to take your time before you rush into this. We believe and have fought for transparency. We believe and have fought for accountability, but this is the wrong time and the wrong way to go about it. We want to have some say in this. We want to be able to have our communities come together and assess this. We want you to take the time to really get our input, to really and sincerely listen to us, and to really and sincerely create public policy that we all can support. If you do this, we will be left with no option but to oppose this initiative if you put it on the ballot. Take your time, listen to us. Don't do this now. Thank you.
Next speaker is Melanie Ochoa, followed by Patricia Guerra.
I'm Melanie Ochoa, Staff Attorney for the ACLU of Southern California. The ACLU opposes the proposed ballot item agenda number 14 because it undermines police accountability and even further reduces the likelihood that any officer will be held accountable for misconduct. This proposal does not address the public's desire for greater accountability and transparency. The Board of Rights remains completely secretive and comprised of ever-changing panels that prevent consistency and do not allow anyone to be held accountable for their decisions. This measure is not an attempt to improve the disciplinary process, or the City Council would not have taken the extraordinary step of seeking to amend the city charter without soliciting community input or having any information about the best practices for police discipline. Nor does this create real civilian oversight. The Board of Rights only allows career lawyers and mediators to participate as civilians, a population that the Legislative Analyst Office unambiguously found was even more liable. a population that the Legislative Analyst Office unambiguously found was even more lenient on police than LAPD command staff. This is about giving the police union what they want, which is even more leniency for its officers' misconduct.
Thank you, next speaker is Patricia Guerra, followed by Tim McCosker and Oliver Buie.
Hello, good morning, my name is Patricia Guerra, here with Community Coalition in solidarity with LA CAN, BLM, and ACLU. I'm here in opposition of the item 14. I'm also here in support for items 23 and 24. The proposed change weakens on item 14 specifically, the proposed change weakens police accountability because the CLA's report unquestionably shows that the existing civilian pool is more lenient on officers. I believe that this is a result of not having residents with diverse experiences from the communities that police serve in the pool. I also believe this is why the police union is pushing for an all-civilian Board of Rights. The council shows, should dig deeper into the issue before presenting the ballot measures to the voters. Today, the community is very galvanized, and we hope that you take a harder shirt, like stronger stands, and really protect our communities and really look deeper into the ballot for, and the measure that you put in place.
Tim McCosker, followed by Oliver Buie, good morning.
Good morning, Tim McCosker for the Police Protective League. This matter is not about politics, this is about policy. The statistics, in fact, that were submitted by the Police Department to the CLA and submitted to your committee show that over six years, in out of 229 cases, 190 times there was a finding of guilt, and in 93% of the time, 93% of the time, the civilian voted with the command officers. So that deviation that shows leniency is 7%, 93% of the time. In fact, 10% of the time, the command officers and the civilians voted together for acquittal. So the statistics were used, as statistics are often used, to misstate the facts. Civilians are the most highly qualified folks in this process. If you look at what Mr. Tefan has put together and what the commission has approved, they've done an exceptional job of providing very experienced attorneys, arbitrators, retired, retired police officers in some cases, who understand the legal system, who understand the difference between facts and non-facts. Alternate facts, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We ask you to approve this matter, and let the people vote, let the people make this decision, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver Buie?
Yes, I'm Reverend Oliver E. Buie from Holman United Methodist Church, and I believe that there are good intentions when it comes to this proposal that's before us. However, you have heard the outcry of the public. And I believe that before we take any steps further on such an important matter, that we should bring both sides, and that we must be as transparent as possible as we move forward. It cannot just be an ordinance or something that's driven by one side only, but we need to come together and think it through before we look to continue to proceed and move forward. I think, I hope that you would take that in consideration as we look to work together with government as well as the public and build a community on both sides and not just one side. God bless you.
Next speaker is Dory Frank. Is Dory Frank here?
Good morning, sir, you have one minute.
It's nice to bleep politically correct. I think that a commission like this has to have both police and civilian. Too much emotion on cases whereby you do not hear both sides of the story regarding a police officer shooting of a so-called unarmed person. Therefore, the City Council should pass an ordinance allowing for both civilian and police, and therefore you'll have feedback from both sides. So I'm asking that the City Council revise this charter amendment to include both, be well.
Thank you, sir, that concludes public comment, Madam Clerk, for this item. Mr. Herb Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President and, and members. I really want to thank all of the members of the public who have come here, not just today, but over the past weeks, to testify and to give their point of view on this issue. I don't disagree with anything that you say. Those of you that don't want us to do this now, there is merit, genuine merit, in what you say. The individuals that support that we do this now, there is genuine merit in those reasons for supporting this as well. I don't know if there is a right answer or a wrong answer, but I will say this, that two years ago in July, I stood before this council and indicated that it was time for us as a city to be engaged in a conversation about race, about hate, about tolerance, and about our relationship with the Police Department. In my view, this gives us the vehicle to have that very serious conversation. In the past couple of weeks, I have seen in the newspapers and on the blogs and in meetings that I've had, more conversations about the community and the police, more conversations about that relationship than I've seen in a while. And that's a good thing, because in order for us to come together as the great city that we are, we've gotta have this very uncomfortable conversation where it relates to change and where it relates to reform. The door on this reform with the Board of Rights has been closed since 1992. I believe that once we open this door, that it will be easier for us to open it again and again if we want to make additional changes. I refuse to believe that citizen participation is not a good thing. And if statistics and numbers would indicate that there is a certain degree of leniency when people, citizens, civilians are involved, then we need to change the way we select the citizens. Because citizens are not the problem, maybe the structure is. And that's exactly what we are going to talk about. This is not just about the Board of Rights. This is about creating an ad hoc committee that is going to travel throughout this city having conversations with the community, where you can come and testify before this committee without any fear of being arrested, any fear of being harassed. I want to hear everything that you have to say. And I want you, and we will invite the media, we want them to watch us have this conversation. Now, in the event that the residents and the voters of this city decide to pass this issue, it is still the responsibility of this council to come up with an ordinance to do it. So just because it passes, that doesn't mean that it automatically becomes so. We on this council are going to have to take affirmative action to make it happen as well. Sometimes, a little change leads to a lot of change. And if there's one thing that I do know in my heart and in my soul, is that in order for this city to move forward, in order for this city to survive, we need to have a better relationship between those of us that are civilians and live in this city and for those that we hire as officers to protect us. And the only way that that will occur is if we have a serious, serious, yet sometimes uncomfortable dialogue about that relationship. So yes, for me, this is bigger than just providing police officers the option to select civilians to review them when it's time for discipline. For me, this is about us embracing LA and beginning a serious dialogue about what we can do to make ourselves a better city. Is this perfect? No. Is it flawed? Yes. But I do believe that it is a step in the right direction, that it is a positive step, and I ask my colleagues to please join with me in moving or us taking this step forward so that we can really begin this broader conversation where it relates to reform. I do think that it's time that we do this in the city, and I ask for your i-vote.
Mr. Corret?
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise in support of this ballot measure, which calls for the option of an all-civilian Board of Rights panel for police disciplinary measures. As Chair of the Personnel Committee, I believe this ballot measure moves our city in the right direction regarding increased public participation and transparency of our alarm enforcement processes. The civilians that currently serve are extremely well-qualified and have the right skills to understand the complex and technical issues that would be part of any officer's disciplinary matters, and increasing the civilian role has been recommended in a number of reports, and it's time we begin the process of putting these recommendations in place. I thank everybody who is here to speak on and hear about this issue. It's a gravely important issue and one that needs to be fully studied and reviewed. And I also ask your i-vote.
Thank you, sir, next speaker, Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much, Madam President. You know, I was gonna rise and speak as the Chair of Public Safety, and instead of doing that, I'm gonna speak from the heart. Outside of being a City Council member, I'm also a reserve Los Angeles police officer. I put on the same badge, uniform, and gun as every police officer that works the streets in Los Angeles, and I do it for free. But why do I do it? I do it because of a lot of things that have happened to me in my life. I've come from a hard childhood, and my family was a victim of a horrific crime. And as I'm out there, I've seen the change. I've seen the change personally, and how people respond to officers. From when I grew up, we used to chase police officers down the street so we can get one of their baseball cards and collect them. We used to know the officers that worked our block. And we had a different relationship then than we do now. No matter where you are in the city, it's just different. So it goes back to the question, it's a very simple question, one that Los Angeles asked themselves years ago. Who's policing the police? Who's policing the police? The city of Los Angeles was one of the first major cities in this country to have an all-citizen commission because of who's policing the police. And with that, major changes have come out. In fact, it's a model now that the Sheriff's Department in Los Angeles are taking on. So now we're looking at, and it goes beyond just that question. We're looking at how do we expand transparency, conversation, and dialogue? How do we build those relationships back and build the flexibility into the system that we need? This answers that question too. I look forward to being part of the ad hoc committee and going citywide and listening, having the conversation, the dialogue on how we can improve, because we have to improve. The men and women that put on the uniform and the badge, many and far too often pay the ultimate sacrifice. There are many people on the streets that are going through horrific times, and they too pay the ultimate sacrifice. We all need to work together, and I believe this is a step in that direction in doing that. Also, every Monday, we sit in Budget Finance in the Committee chaired by Councilmember Kokorian, and we hear case after case after case with millions of taxpayer dollars being paid out, and it doesn't seem to end. It doesn't seem that there's a change on the horizon. In fact, oftentimes, and this is the frustrating thing, and I will tell you, this is one of the things I am most frustrated with, is we often will ask the question, where's that officer now? Because it was a case that was six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago. And the answer we often hear is, oh, they've been promoted. Really? And we scratch our head, dumbfounded, we need to do more. Now, having said that, we have hundreds, if not thousands, of officers who are phenomenal. In fact, most of them do an incredible job each and every day. They are the role models I want for my children. They put their lives on the front line, and they go beyond that. I'll be celebrating them, one of them next week, bringing in one of our senior lead officers, and you gotta hear some of the stories of what they're doing that are just heroic and beyond. But this change has come, and the time has come, and we need to do more. So I proudly support moving this forward, and I want to compliment and thank our council president for taking this initiative on and putting it before the voters. Thank you.
Here, Madam Clerk, that concludes, members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Item passes, let's move on. Mr. Previn, you're next, you have a number of cards you filled out. You're speaking on item 1, 25, 26, 28, 30, 32, 34, 36, 37. And you're one minute for public comment, go ahead.
Yes, it is Eric Previn from CD2, and I am running for the office of Mayor of Los Angeles. Item number one is your regular lean item. It's a public hearing for a number of properties today. Four such properties, we're leaning against properties in CD8, Marquise Harris Dawson's district, and three separate liens are on properties for CD7 where there is no, no Trump, is what Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson signed said, but there is no Mr. Fuentes. There is a vacant seat in CD7, which is a terrible abnegation because nobody is advocating for those people. Item, I'm happy to point out that Mr. Blumenfeld is finally on the board. He has not been posting many liens against his constituents, but now he has four liens against his constituents on today's agenda, which is a breakthrough for him. And Mr. Buscaino has three separate liens against his constituents. And in CD9, where Kern Price rules, we have two. He's finally adding some liens on his residents for old building and safety stuff in conjunction with the plan that Mayor Garcetti dredged up to go through the boxes to get revenue to cover the cost of the litigation that Mr. Englander was just talking about. Mr. Englander, of course, is creating more and more litigation himself by his refusing to comply with the rules and the laws of California and the open government rules that we put in place here, and we'll get to that later. Item number 37 is something where we have a measure of appreciation here. The women of the probation program in Los Angeles County are being celebrated. We're gonna provide some gowns and an opportunity to be celebrated down at LA Live, it's very nice. The thing that upsets me is that AEG, one of the largest lobbyists here in Los Angeles, is getting paid by the city to provide a small conference room. We're spending $7,000 when we have all of these horrible needs. Why are these lobbyists who are just down here, they're all hovering around because they were excited to be supportive of Mr. Wesson's civilian oversight gesture? Why are we paying for this? Why aren't they simply donating it? I mean, my God, am I, am I off on that? Correct me if I'm wrong. In the little section about land use, we have some Cultural Heritage Commission work. Bob Hope's residence is gonna be delayed so we can approve it. And the one that I think deserves the attention of this council in public here, item 31 on your agenda, is an extension of time to approve the Parker Center. Now, the Parker Center is nothing to be proud of, okay? It is a painful reminder of some of the most darkest chapters in our history here in Los Angeles. And so I would ask... And so I would ask that any effort to designate that place or make it hallowed is problematic. We all respect cops. I am the first one in line to say something nice about the cops who are doing their job correctly, but to celebrate this place is off tone for me. Item number twenty-six, Weezer today, is negotiating with SoCal Gas. So I hope everyone's paying close attention. Over at L.A. County Board of Supervisors, CS3 today is a lawsuit against SoCal Gas. So I don't know what he's trying to work out. I'm sure it will be a deal that's favorable to either SoCal Gas or Mr. Weezer. I hope the public will also benefit. Item number twenty-eight is paint asbestos. Oh, now I got my single minute.
Now, you have one minute, sir, for your general public comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. I want to thank you for your work over the weekend for this incredible showing of people who came out from all over Los Angeles and all over the country to stick up for themselves and to stick up for one another. It was deeply moving, and I don't want to impugn the new president yet because, obviously, though I would not vote for him, as the Pope said, he should be given a chance before we judge. But I do want to say that down here at City Hall, politics and government are two separate categories, and I'm very concerned that this hall is once again being used over and over again for political maneuvering. It's very ironic for Council President Wesson to stand up and talk about civilian oversight when he has simply looked away repeatedly from the public in this space. If he could address why, Council Rule 93, which says all of the residents should appear the same in a telecast, ask yourself now, how is he enforcing the law?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Zuma Dog. Are you here? There you are. And, sir, you have filled out cards for items twenty-eight, thirty-one, thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirteen. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'd like to talk about the, this twenty-one, one of the items, $21 million for multi-housing to purchase for the acquisition and rehabilitation for multifamily housing. Twenty-one million dollars, that's a lot. I would like to know if I can get an answer on how many families will be housing for the 21 million. I hope at least an 80-unit minimum building. I don't think so. Now, I'm concerned about, then, let's move to the next one, demolition of a building over toxic substances. Now, this is already an existing low-income building. Now, what I don't like about this is I think that, gee, let's tear down this affordable housing of low-income units over this toxic matter. Okay, gee, now we're going to build, oh, I guess we better do luxury condos here, okay? Now, I want the city, number one priority, to be the homeless housing and low income for the workers, because as I drove downtown today, I saw nothing but homeless encampments up and down the sidewalk in places I've never seen them before, and you can't even walk down the sidewalks anymore. And I'm not talking Skid Row. I'm talking city of Los Angeles. Hello! Investor alert. We have a homeless encampment crisis on the streets of L.A. that's not being reported about.
The speaker seems geared off-topic.
While we have a sick pay-per-play city council.
Mr. Zuma Dog.
That's moving them out of the way. What?
Sir, you need to stick to the items that you filled out cards for. They're off-topic.
Okay, stick to the item. I'm going to talk about, I want to make sure that the, how do you, I think every item about housing is about the fact you've got homeless encampments all over the streets now. You can't even walk down the streets, and you want to move them out of the way. You want to tear down affordable housing to build luxury condos still. And I think that, hello, my name's Zuma Dog, if you're listening, and we have an emergency triple-alarm crisis on the streets of L.A. It's called homeless encampments.
I can't, I think we veered off topic.
Up and down the streets everywhere, and we've got Rick Caruso here because he paid half a million dollars to you people to approve his 20-story project, okay? It's called pay-per-play. It's called pay-per-play. And I think Paul Coretts needs to be replaced. Vote for somebody else. And vote on all these incumbents. We've got a pay-per-play crisis.
Sir, you're not on topic.
What?
You're not on topic? You can talk about that in your general public comment, but not now.
Okay, I'll do that, then. Let me just wrap up by saying that my name's Zuma Dog, candidate for mayor, zumadog.com.
Now, you have your one minute for general public comment, sir. Start the clock, please.
My name's Zuma Dog. Please go to zumadog.com, Z-U-M-A-D-O-G. I'm here today to talk about the state of L.A. City under do-nothing Mayor Eric Garcetti. Now, in case you haven't heard, when you go outside in Los Angeles, you don't have to go to Skid Row. Now, Rick Caruso might be here today because he paid half a million dollars to the City Hall to approve some bullshit skyscraper thing that nobody wants in that area, okay? Now, in case you haven't noticed it, you can't even drive anymore. The gridlock is so bad, and you've got homeless encampments all up and down the street, and you want to build more luxury condo bullshit. You're a bunch of hypocritical pay-per-play frauds, and I hope y'all get voted out, especially Paul Coretts. Vote Zuma Dog for mayor. Vote yes on S, zumadog.com.
Members, thank you, Mr. Zuma Dog. You can sit down, sir. Thank you very much. Have a good day. The next item, members, that we're going to be voting on, we've already satisfied public comments, are for items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine, and thirty-one. Madam Clerk, can you open the roll for those items? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
Okay, those items pass. Let's move on to item twenty-eight, as amended, Madam Clerk. That item has also, we've satisfied public comment as well. So item twenty-eight is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to item one I.
And, Madam President, as the speaker comes forward, there are requests to continue one F, J, and U for two weeks to February 7th.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. On item one, we have Mark Barton. Mark Barton on item one.
Mark Barton here. Boy, you guys take a lot of abuse from the public. I am here on 11749 Eldridge Avenue in Tilmar. The bills that Building and Safety were sending, the property owner never got the bill. Sometimes the dogs go out, the neighbors let the dogs out, and they don't deliver the mail, whatever the case might be. That is the reason why Building and Safety have a certified letter to prove da-da-da. According to Code Enforcement Inspector Brian Huff, it's the other way around. The property owner have to prove that he didn't get the mail. I don't know what he's smoking or drinking, but whatever he's taking, I want them.
Thank you, sir. Sir, sir, can you come back for just a second? We're going to continue your item for 30 days. That puts you at February 22nd. I'm going to have you speak to the staff at the ropes.
All right.
Okay? Thank you. Next speaker is Juan T. Is there somebody here with the name Juan T? Oh, Mr. Alcala. Good morning. You're speaking on item one?
Yes, I was going to put Juan T. one, but I didn't know how to.
You're the one filling out the card, sir. Go ahead.
Yes. On number one, liens upon people, this guy says, oh, you take a lot of abuse from the public. No, you abuse the public all the time.
That is not the, that's not the item that you filled out a card for. You filled out a card for item one.
Yeah, that's usually liens, isn't it? Isn't it? Liens against people.
So speak on the liens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about. You should not be putting liens on people. You're taking the housing that they barely were able to afford, and you think that the people can come and give you all their money just because you want to abuse them? Fuck you, City Hall, you need to be abused. Fuck Donald Trump, he needs to be abused. He abuses everybody. Fuck everybody.
You have your one minute for general public comment, Mr. Alcala.
General public comment. Generally speaking, the public is not even heard. That's why they elected that asshole, Donald Trump, because he says he'll represent you, but he'll only represent the rednecks. Don't you understand the rest of the world is afraid of that son of a bitch? I don't understand why that asshole was able to win the election. Since he lost the general election, really, the people voted for Clinton. Not that she's much better, but at least she's not a total asshole like Donald Trump. I can't even do the shape of his mouth because I'd like to put some chorizo in there. Fuck you, Donald Trump. Fuck you, Donald Trump. Fuck you, Donald Trump. Fuck you, Donald Trump.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alcala. The next speaker on item one is Ben Samoa. Is there someone here by that, with that name? Ben Samoa for item one.
Good morning. I'm here, I send a certified mail like they requested me to appeal the lien, and I just spoke to.
Sir, what lien are you referring to? What's the address?
I'm sorry?
What's the address of the property you are referring to?
Oh, I filled it up. It's at 22.
It's not, it's not in the cards.
Yes, ma'am. 22240 Runnymede, R-U-N-N-Y-M-E-D-E.
So you're speaking on item 1O.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We're going to continue this item for 30 days. I can have you speak to the staff at the ropes, and 30 days puts you at February 22nd.
May I ask, what's the purpose of continuing?
I can have you speak to the staff, that's right, sitting right there, but we can continue your item for 30 days.
I already took off from work, prepared everything, sent certified mail like.
Sir, we can have the staff help you. He's sitting right next to you. Do you see him?
Yeah.
He can tell, he can explain to you the formality and why we continue it for 30 days. Thank you.
He tells me that he doesn't have my papers, ma'am.
Okay, listen, walk over to the side here, he's going to speak to you over there on the side, okay?
It's my turn, let me.
No, but your time is up. Your time is up, okay? So walk over to the side of us.
Excuse me. Okay, I know. Ma'am, he's just told me he does not.
Sir, I cannot resolve your issue from the chair. You have to speak to the staff. He's sitting right next to you. Thank you very much.
Walk over to the side over here, sir.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and open the roll on item one. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Harris Dawson?
I wanted to make sure that vote that I cast on items 28, 29, and 31 cast a no vote. The no vote was only for item 31, not for 28 and 29. Thank you.
That's noted. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, we're now going to go on to items 13 and 21. We're going to take those up together, and there's a number of cards as well for both Mr. Coretts, would you like to speak on this item now, or should I take cards?
Thank you, Madam President. Before you today is a project located in my district at 333 Los Anega Boulevard. This project is supported by the immediate neighborhood groups in the area, by the Mid-City West Community Council, by its most directly affected residents, and many community leaders, and with significant reductions in height of almost 25% with the preservation of public open space, all of the community agreed upon amenities, and the addition of $500,000 for homeless housing, I am now able to support this project as well, and I'll ask for your i-vote.
Okay, so we have a number of cards, Mr. Coretts, on the side, and we're going to reopen public comment and give each speaker one minute. The next, the first speaker is Dick Platten. Is he here? Next speaker is Dory Frank and Matt Dixon. Are you, Mr. Platten?
Yes, I am.
Good morning.
My name is Richard Platten, 6400 West Fifth. I submitted remarks last week. I'm going to continue to read them. The City Council's spot zoning and spot planning that will be necessary for this project will undermine the imminent update of the Wilshire Community Plan with many nonconforming uses, such as a 185-foot tower building where the carefully formulated plans restrict development to 45 feet. Second, if this project and then similar ones goes through, there will be no certainty with the update of the Wilshire Community Plan. It will become an irrelevant shelf document because any developer with deep pockets will be able to do whatever they want with land in this neighborhood regardless of carefully-prepared and adopted zoning and planning designations. The third point, the DEI or Alternative One, one of two environmentally superior options should be supported.
Thank you, sir.
Cancer Center.
The next speaker is Dory Frank. If you can stand in line, please, as I call your name. Matt Dixon is followed by Dory Frank.
Sorry, Paul, I have to pose you on this project, and I've known Paul since high school.
Sir, hold this time for just a second. I just need to clarify. If you're here with the appellate, just let me know when you're about to speak.
I'm against what Paul's proposed.
That's fine. I just need to know, I just need to know, because I can't tell by your electronic submission.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's not your fault. It's on our end.
I've known Paul since high school, so.
Okay. Sir, go ahead, start his time again.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Mr. Frank. Go ahead.
Three things, I think that the City Council has to go en masse to the project and see what its impact is on traffic. Yes, traffic, because I work in the area. Jobs, well, let's see, most of the projects involve Hispanics who are usually not have green cards or here illegal. I know that from the McMansions in my area. So I ask that this council delay a vote until you all go down and see the traffic jams during the morning, afternoon, evening. So what do you gain? I mean, if you go down Third Street all the way across the night, it's jammed. So what does Caruso gain by it? He gains money, but the, but the community loses, and that's something to think about. It isn't just jobs, it's the traffic jam, and I don't think that has really been looked at seriously enough, Paul. You haven't. I don't care about it's reduced to 185 feet, it was Lowman's, it's jammed. Be well.
Thank you, sir. Matt Dixon?
Good morning. My name's Matt Dixon. I represent Abundant Housing L.A. We're an advocacy group that's dedicated to helping solve L.A.'s housing crisis, and we think the way to do that is by building a lot more housing, both market rate and affordable units. We strongly support the 333 South Los Anega Project. It's going to add both market rate and affordable units through the use of the density bonus. It's located in a walkable neighborhood, close to a lot of jobs. It's well-served by transit, and it's going to be even better served by transit once the Purple Line stop at Los Anega opens. So again, we strongly support this project, and we urge you to approve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Philippe Kohanien, followed by Ron Miller, followed by Robbie Batia. Good morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Philippe Kohanien, and I'm a longtime president of the West Bay Terrace Homeowner Association. 11th story, 82-unit high-rise building located at 321 South Sandy Center Boulevard directly across from the project. We strongly support this project. It will make the neighborhood more secure. It will make the neighborhood more secure, walkable, and beautiful. It will improve the city streets, lighting, crosswalks, bike lanes, and medians. We will also enjoy having fifteen new mature trees, a park with sitting areas, and water fountain, neighborhood market, and restaurants. On the economic side, it will create hundreds of good-paying, blue-collar and white-collar jobs. In turn, will create more state and federal taxes. L.A. needs more housing, and this is the right location with fourteen units of very low and moderate-income household. Please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Ron Miller, followed by Ravi Bahadia and Rick Caruso.
Good morning, Madam President, council members. Ron Miller with the L.A. Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. Here on behalf of one-hundred-and-forty thousand hard-working men and women. We do support this project. We look forward to the relationship we're creating with Mr. Caruso. We feel that he's done his homework in the community. He's got wide community support for this project. It's going to be a good project, create many, many middle-class jobs. And with entrance into our apprenticeship programs, we look forward to doing many more projects in the future. Please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ravi Batia. I'm a board member of Mid-City West Community Council. I also chair the Planning and Land Use Committee. Mid-City West is made up of seven zones that reflect the diversity of the community. Nearly eighty percent of our general board voted to affirmatively support this project. The project development brings a high standard of community engagement and results in a project that our neighborhood deserves. Caruso worked in good faith with Mid-City West and the affected community engagements were robust, polarized, hard-fought, and I believe hard-won the concessions. The developers set aside the regional center designation and changed the plan to general commercial so as to be consistent with surrounding land use. The City of Los Angeles is implementing billions of dollars in transportation improvements that will be completed within the next decade and operate into the next century. The project includes many beneficial elements that harmonize with these long-term transportation projects. I encourage you to vote and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caruso, followed by Jamie Hall?
Good morning, members of council. I'm excited today on behalf of myself and our team that we're in the final stage and process and we're ready to start this project. We are planning on building a project that represents the best-in-class for the community in terms of community benefits, quality design, and sustainability. We have spent two years working with local homeowners and our neighbors. I want to thank the city staff, the planning commission, the Plum Committee, Councilmember Coretts for their leadership and guidance, and a special thank you to Mid-City West Community Council, Westbury Terrace, Burton Way Homeowners Association, and all the members of the community, business leaders, building trades for their support and working with us through this process. This project has overwhelming community support and input. We, I respectfully ask that you approve this project and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jamie Hall, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. My name is Jamie Hall. I represent a neighborhood organization, Concerned Citizens of Beverly Hills/Beverly Grove. What I'd like to just remind everyone here is that you are changing the law to accommodate this project. The height limit says it's supposed to be forty-five feet. There's a specific land use designation. And you're changing the law to accommodate this project. That's not the way this is supposed to work. We're supposed to have rules that apply and developers are supposed to say, "Okay, well, this is what I can build on this project site." And this is why Measure S was proposed. And this is not the way that you're supposed to organize or plan a city. And if you go to any graduate planning school, they would tell you that. So we're opposed to the project. We also believe the project doesn't comply with Measure JJJ recently passed because it does not provide the level of affordable housing that's required. So just be intellectually honest with yourselves and recognize that this is spot zoning. Thank you.
Next speaker, Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Couple of things. We know that this is going to be a project labor agreement, but what people don't realize when you hear it will help low-income people. I think somebody mentioned it'll create a lot of good-paying jobs. There was a story in the newspaper about metro jobs paying forty-five thousand dollars a year. But the median income to live in Los Angeles right now, seventy-nine thousand. So you're still twenty, no, thirty-four thousand dollars short. Who's going to make up the difference? And there are a lot of talk about how disadvantaged workers will benefit. The hiring process is done through census tract. So it's a wider area to choose from to enable people to get hired for these jobs. It's not local as you would think. Census tract could be, there is no definition for that because elected officials don't want anybody to know. Know on the project.
The next speaker on item twenty-one is Rosalie Wayne.
My name is Rosalie Wayne. I live at eighty-one forty Blackburn. I'm opposed to this project. I circulated a petition in the neighborhood where eleven hundred people, that eleven hundred residents signed, all in the adjacent area. The people who are supporting the project have been unions, Chamber of Commerce, all these good folks, but they're not the people who live in the neighborhood. Councilman Coretts disappointed us by supporting a one-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot building. We were, would have been happy to accept something lesser that was more compatible with the neighborhood. And so I wish you wouldn't approve this project today because it is, it's incongruent. It does not fit into our community and it sets a precedent of tall buildings going up Los Anega. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That, ma'am, I'm sorry. That concludes comments for items thirteen and twenty-one. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to respond to a few things. First of all, on the traffic. Traffic planning assessments show even before it was reduced from two-hundred-and-forty feet, the difference between a very successful retailer being there and residential tower with a very walkable neighborhood would actually be a reduction in traffic. With a twenty-four, twenty-five percent, almost twenty-five percent reduction in the height and square footage, this will definitely be a traffic reduction from what could be built there otherwise. So to say that this is a traffic increase, I think it's just taking a look at the building and not really looking at the underlying use. As far as the impact and the precedent, it's not the tallest building in the area. It is surrounded by tall buildings that were all approved in excess of the zone. Everything from the Beverly Center to the Sofitel to multiple buildings at Cedar Sinai, to the building south of this one, to the condo association. Every one of these buildings is built as a tall building. It's not like you're in a pristine, low-rise area. In fact, the only building that's low-rise is the one that's there now. I don't believe this will set any kind of precedent for the surrounding area. It's a tiny building in an island of large buildings. As far as the regional center designation, I think that's important. I think that could have set a precedent. And I think that's removed. As far as the height, I think going below one-hundred-and-eighty-eight feet, where Cedar Sinai is, also might have set a precedent. That issue is also removed by going below that height. In general, I think this will be a big plus for the area. I think once it's built and functioning, a lot of the folks that are complaining about it now will actually recognize that this is a plus and will make a much better neighborhood. And again, I ask for your i-vote.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to rise and thank everybody who got involved in this case, especially the councilmember Coretts. Typically, we don't comment on projects in other folks' district. But I wanted to rise on this one because all of us who care about affordable housing, it's important to note that these projects are important because if they're not done and these units aren't created, those people don't go away. That market doesn't disappear. That market moves to another neighborhood that we now call affordable and that neighborhood becomes unaffordable. And so I think it takes a lot of courage. I think it takes a lot of discipline. And I think it takes a lot of study and work to move L.A. into the future. But this is an example of us doing that. So I want to thank Mr. Coretts and everybody who was involved in this project.
Thank you. That concludes, members on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on both items, items thirteen and twenty-one. Let's open the roll. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, item's passed. Let's move on to... Madam Clerk, we're prepared to vote on items thirty-four, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. Let's open the roll on those items, thirty-four, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item seventeen for Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. This is an item that I'm sure some of your constituents have called about as well. As you know, we had a ban on painting blue curbs for people with, that needed ADA access. And as we inquired about that, we soon realized that there are some state laws that is quite frankly putting the city and its residents in a position where no one's needs are being met. But working with the Department of Transportation and the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Bonin, this compromise came up so that we at least have some accessibility at the ends of our blocks where people are requesting these blue ADA access to their homes. I think it's kind of disappointing that the state has not helped us resolve this issue where people with real ADA needs cannot park in front of the house and the city goes out and paints the curb blue to allow them to have that free access. But for now, this will do. It wanted to alert all of us about this possibility now where, where needed and if certain conditions are met, at the end of each block where a person requests this, we could, would be able to paint a parking area there blue for people to have some ADA access. It's a good step, but we look forward to continuing the discussion of how we can make ADA access more convenient for people who need it. So thank you, Mr. Bonin, the Transportation Committee, and the Department of Transportation for working with us on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. There are no public comment cards on this item, so let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, item passes. There's been a request to send items thirteen and twenty-one forthwith.
And Madam President, there's also a request to send item nineteen forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Let's move on to item thirty-two. The first speaker on this item is Charooni Patibunda.
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you. And members of the city council, my name is Charooni Patibunda from Glazer Wile on behalf of the Hope family. On behalf of the property owners, we oppose any extensions that further delay the final decision of the one-oh-three-four-six Moore Park Street property. After a site visit and full hearing, the Cultural Heritage Commission unanimously denied this designation because it did not meet the standards set forth under the code. So an extension is really not needed at this time. The home is not architecturally significant and the property is not even visible from the street. A designation does nothing to benefit the public and in fact, it hurts the community because further restrictions on the property inhibit the Bob and Dolores Hope Foundation, a five-oh-one-C-three charitable charity, charitable entity which will receive the proceeds from the sale as directed in Bob Hope's will. So we urge you not to approve the extension and to allow this matter to go forward on February fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eric Shabiz.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the Los Angeles City Council. Eric Shapza speaking on behalf of Linda Hope, who is unable to be here this morning due to commitments she has as the president of the Bob and Dolores Hope Foundation. The mission of the foundation is to support organizations that provide hope to those in need and those who serve our nation. Ms. Hope is opposed to this motion to extend the deliberation period on the status of her parents' residence. It is her desire that this matter be closed as swiftly as possible. In November, after a site visit and full report on the property, the Cultural Heritage Commission unanimously recommended not to deem the property historic as all reports concluded the property contains no structures of architectural significance. The deliberations by the committee were thorough and clear. And since that meeting for over two months, Ms. Hope has been patiently waiting for the matter to be heard at Plum and City Council and for this matter to be resolved. Please do not extend the time period for an extra fifteen days. Rather, Ms. Hope asks that this matter be concluded before February fifteenth as stipulated at the outset of this process. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, item passes. Let's move on to item thirty, Madam Clerk. Okay, we have a number of cards on this item. Dave Jacoby. Is that person here? Or it might be Dave Jacob, but I have here Dave Jacoby. Followed by Will Negrete and Arnold Sacks. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning, council. I'm requesting an extension on the vesting track map to rezone the property on the south side of Plummer between Sepulveda and Orion. My family has owned our single-family residence at ninety-five thirty-eight Langdon Avenue since nineteen fifty-three. I am opposed to the rezoning from RA1 to the developer's proposal of TQRD one-point-five-point-one. If allowed, the impact will prove to be negative. For example, an increase in the already overburdened vehicular traffic. This will pose additional hazard to pedestrians, including the children, that walk to and from school located at Sepulveda and Plummer. I'm not opposed to the building of single-family dwellings, which was the original concept dictated by the city planners. The vast majority of the homeowners in my community are opposed to the rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Will Negrete, followed by Arnold Sacks and Charles Johnson.
Good morning. I've just come here to ask you to please vote in favor of extending the time to act on our appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Arnold Sacks. Is Arnold Sacks still in the building? Sir, what is your name?
Charles Johnson.
I'm sorry, Charles Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm speaking on the, that we extend the appeal on that Plummer property and because we have people from a half a mile away opposing it. We, and not only, not only close by, not only, but a half a mile away. So we need to have our say in this, up here. And we haven't had, been able to say it. Not only that, our councilman resigned before we even got the case. So we're hoping we'll get another councilman. I know Mr. Wesson has been, he's, he's been trying to help us, but we really need a councilman of our own.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Arnold Sacks, followed by Koween Thornton...
Yes, thank you.
Thornton Preris?
Good morning, Arnold Sacks.
I hope I got that correct. Are you, are you, are you Koween? Okay, just stand behind Mr. Sacks.
So, thank you. So I looked at this item, a vesting tentative track map, and based on the last item you had and Mr. Harris Dawson's remarks about people moving from one development... had and Mr. Harris Dawson's remarks about people moving from one development to affordable housing development, making it unaffordable, I'm wondering if any part of this vesting and this track map for this address will make it maintained as affordable housing? Because we just heard from the councilman that people who don't get the buildings that are like Mr. Caruso wants to build, move to affordable neighborhoods. And then those neighborhoods become unaffordable to the people that live there. So what are you gonna do to make sure that this vested item here for this particular street or in these districts remain affordable for the people to move in? Because from what you hear in downtown L.A., there's 10,000 apartment units going up, average rate for payment, like $2,000.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you. Koween? Hold on for just a second, I'm calling the next two speakers up. Joe Akahoshi? Is somebody here by the name of Joe Akahoshi, followed by Monty Stamps? How do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Thoncompiravas. Good morning, everyone. My name is Kewen Thoncompiravas. I'm here today because I would like to request you all to please vote for, to extend the time to act on our appeal. I'd like to mirror Councilman Weston's sentiments earlier about establishing a conversation between the neighborhood as well as the City Council, because we actually did not get notified about a lot of the developments that are about to occur in our vicinity. And us as the neighborhood owners, we want to be able to speak up and voice our sentiments to the City Council. And the reason why we have this in particular is I've lived in the area for over twenty years. My family has been property owners here, and we've seen developments happen which have negatively impacted our area. Being a property owner, we've, we've had to install an automatic gate just so that we would feel safe back in the days when parking was all over the place. And even then, even our automatic gate was stolen because of the increased crime that parking, that the areas parking is affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Akahoshi? Followed by Monty Stamps. Go ahead.
We do not and have not had a councilman since Felipe Fuentes resigned in August 2016, which is for the entire time...
Thank you.
...that the residents of this neighborhood have been aware of the project, actually those that were within 500 feet. We were also not represented within our own neighborhood council, who voted on this project a full year earlier in August of 2015, without consulting one resident or having any member who lived in the area on its board. Council President Herb Wesson is the one who made the motion for the continuance, and we appreciate his commitment to oversee our district due to the lack of representation on the council for the residents of District Seven. We've had a hard time navigating our opposition to the rezon without a councilman, but have filed all the paperwork in a timely manner and look to the rest of you on the council to help us, since we have really had no representation from our own district councilman or neighborhood council in this area. So if you could please vote to give us the continuance, please.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Monty Stamps, and I'm also a concerned neighbor of the North Furo area on asking for this continuance. We feel that it will have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes cards on this item. Mr. Wesson?
Members, the communities throughout the city of Los Angeles should be listened to whenever possible, and, and the folk that have come down here today make a very valid case. That's why I'm requesting that we extend this. So I would like to send them all back home on a very positive note. So I'm requesting that we get a unanimous vote where it relates to the extension of this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wesson. No one out, no more members on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, item passes. Thank you very much for coming down here. We're gonna move on to item thirty-three. We also have cards on this item. The first speaker on item thirty-three is Doug Haynes. Followed by Arnold Sacks.
Morning, my name is Doug Haynes of the La Mirada Neighborhood Association. I'm down here just so I can give some clarification on the record in this matter. This motion references a settlement agreement, but fails to acknowledge that the settlement was between La Mirada and the City Council in 2008. No notice was provided to us as required by Section 11 of that settlement agreement. So please note that. It's important that the, excuse me, Mitchell Farah, I'm sorry, but it's important that you recognize that the funds referenced in the motion are required to be allocated for a neighborhood traffic mitigation program. The city has strict performance requirements to mitigate traffic intrusion resulting from the project, which is 437 dwelling units plus 300,000 square feet of commercial. The settlement was a result of lengthy negotiations, and I'm here to ensure that CD-13 and the city attorney please abide by those provisions. And again, Mitch, I really appreciate if you would work with our neighborhood and not just ignore what I just said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Arnold Sacks, item thirty-three.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, good morning, not good morning, Arnold Sacks. Hollywood Mobility Trust Fund. You know, there's so many different funds here. I'm thinking about Mezorar Local Return Funds that you got from Mezorar. They aren't used for Mezorar, sidewalks and streets. Have we ever come up with a detailed plan for that? No. The sidewalks, although that's part of the, what, the $30 billion plan that Mayor Spaghetti offered up to take 50 years or 60 years to do, good luck with that. It's just, who, who, this is by the applicant delivering these funds in lieu of what? What charges will the applicant be free of doing? What, what funds will he not have to pay into? We know that a lot of projects get waived, the room occupancy tax waived so that they can pencil in and make the projects work. What is being eliminated in this project to make this project work for the applicant?
That concludes cards on item thirty-three. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, there's been a request to send item twenty-six forthwith. Okay, we're gonna move on to special one. Mr. Buscaino.
I'll turn to the city attorney for, for the findings.
Thank you. Agenda, there have been major storms coming through...
Can you up his mic, please? Thank you, sir. It's okay. Still, hold on, hold on, Mr. City Attorney.
On?
Channel thirty-five is working.
We'll try it one more time.
Yes, there you go, you're on.
So since the posting of the agenda, major storms have rolled through the city, and there's an immediate need for the council to be briefed on these storms and what needs to be done. Two motions are required. First, a motion on the findings under Government Code Section 54954.2. Then we'll take public comment if that motion passes before we vote on the substance of the item.
Okay, let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, one no.
Okay, that item is before us now. We have one public comment card. Mr. Arnold Sacks on special one. Are you still here? If I can ask the members of the public if they can please take a seat? Can you clear the aisle, sergeants, please? Go ahead, sir. Speaking on special one.
Special one is the, about the storm coming up. I'm just curious, because last year, with the crisis for El Nino or the rainstorms that were coming, the County Board of Supervisors allocated $1 billion, $100 million for the homeless funds to open up shelters and whatever. Where'd that money go? Because we really wasn't the storms. Where is, why isn't the city looking out for its allocated funds that it would get out of that $100 million? Where is the city gonna come up with extra funding? The county allocated the $100 million, the Board of Supervisors oversees the city, and yet they, all they wanna do is provide services, as they want with the Prop H for the, for the HHH. It doesn't make sense. You need to start paying attention to both levels of government that are going on in the city and the county, because one provides services and the other provides housing, and neither of them, you can't run a train on one track. And yet that's how government works in L.A.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, we're now closing public comment on special one. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam President, colleagues. Over the last weekend, the city of Los Angeles has been hit with one of the strongest storms in decades, and in fact, we experienced rain levels 216% above the city's average. A number of our council offices were flooded with calls, literally, over the last couple of days. In my district alone, Harbor City Pine suffered a number of downed trees. In San Pedro, the gardens were flooded and mud streams, stream, was streaming down north Gaffey. In Wilmington, at Pine Creek and PCH, flooding occurred there that resulted in one death. So the city of Los Angeles experienced floods, mudslides, downed trees and limbs, blocked storm drains, sewage overflows down power lines, waterfalls, and beyond. It's important that the city clearly communicate their steps to mediate the impacts from the rain, as well as share information with our residents on how we can all stay safe and dry as possible in the coming weeks. So in partnership with Mr. Rue, we organized this Rule 23 presentation. Also like to thank Mr. Englander, Chairman of Public Safety, for his support on this. It's important, again, to get a comprehensive briefing on the events of the last 48 hours here in the city of Los Angeles. And before I bring up our representatives from various departments, I do want to thank the entire city family for stepping up, being responsive, and addressing a number of our concerns. I know I was on the phone well into wee hours of the mornings, of the morning of Saturday, Sunday, even Monday, receiving text messages, responding, and sending text messages to a number of people throughout the city of Los Angeles. So with that, colleagues, I invite, we have representatives from EMD, the Fire Department, Street Services, Sanitation, and LADWP. Want to bring up Chris Epson, Emergency Management Coordinator, to come to the table. From the Fire Department, Chief Poyer. Street Services, Greg Spots, Assistant Director of Street Services. And representing sanitation, we have our division managers who are here, Barry Bergren, Fernando Gonzalez. And from the LADWP, David Seaworth, who is one of our superintendents for the DWP. So why don't we kick it off with...
Buscaino, can we hold on for just a second? I have other members on the queue.
Yes, ma'am.
We've got special instructions from our city attorney. Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Buscaino, for your initiative on this motion, and thank you, Councilmember Englander with Public Safety, for all the being on high alert. And, and just like Councilmember Buscaino said, first and foremost, I really want to thank our first responders and all of our departments, from Department of Transportation, Public Works, Department of Building and Safety. I mean, the whole entire family, city family was mobilized, very highly reactive and on it. So I mean, it was a tremendous sight to see. And as the council member stated, you know, our region has been fortunate over the past couple of weeks to see the amount of rainfall that we have from this five-year drought. But this dramatic shift from the norm also comes with pitfalls. And my district unfortunately had a number of mudslides and flooding. Most significantly was Laurel Canyon, where we had to do street closures for a couple of days. But we've also had numerous mudslides in Coenga, Coenga Pass, and Silver Lake, and many other areas. And while we were very fortunate to have been prepared since last year, as we prepared for the Godzilla El Nino, which never came, you know, there is no limit to preparedness. And especially because we don't with any real accuracy know exactly what's coming down the pike. So it's incredibly important that our emergency services, as well as this council and our residents are prepared for every eventuality. So thank you so much, and I really appreciate all the work you've done.
Point of order, I believe we need to take a vote.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Go ahead. We should vote on the substance of the item, since the motion is actually to present these reports so that the council can evaluate the situation.
And then we'll go on to the staff. So go ahead, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, very well. Mr. Buscaino, did you wanna...
Any other members?
...leave us in conversation, or who wants to go first?
First, I'll turn it to our emergency management first to kick it off.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Chris Ipsen with Emergency Management Department. Thank you for being here. First of all, I want to thank the City Council for your support of emergency operations and my partners here that are with us. Without these folks here, I couldn't, our department couldn't do their job. So just want to give a quick, a couple of quick highlights of our response to the storms. Number one, we are the department responsible for activating the Emergency Operations Center through the Duty Officer Program, and the, the center was activated throughout the storms. We activated our response plans, adverse weather plan, which we have in place. That included citywide coordination calls where we bring in all these key responders, talk about issues, including what's going on in the council districts, what are we messaging out to the public. So that's all coordinated out of the Emergency Operations Center. We work closely with Fire Department, with their Department Operations Center, which was activated, and Chief Poyer will talk about that. LAPD, close relationship with LAPD, their Department Operations Center was also activated, so we were able to have seamless coordination. Wreckin' Parks, Public Works, which we have our partners here, Department of Transportation. We had a lot of issues, as has been mentioned, and without the coordination and citywide coordination that we were responsible for. The shelter, the homeless is, is a big issue for the city of L.A. We work closely with LASSA, the Los Angeles Homeless Shelter Association. We did extend the shelters 24/7 throughout this period, and they were utilized at about 80 to 90% capacity. So they were very well used and the information was there. So those are open till today, and anytime we have inclement weather, cold weather, these kinds of things, we activate those 24/7 for our homeless folks. Lastly, the public information, obviously, the social media, all of this could not be done without a central coordination point, which the EOC does. We work closely with our public information partners, and we appreciate that collaboration. And then the lastly, we are working now with the City Administrative Officer. This has been proclaimed, January 3rd. It was retroactive, but we're also now working with the City Administrative Officer and compiling damage assessments from every city department, including overtime costs, all the costs associated with the response. We're gonna coordinate that with the City Administrative Officer. Thank you.
Want to just hear from the Fire Department, please? Chief?
Hi, I'm Al Poyer with the Emergency Operations Office of the Fire Department. The councilman mentioned the mobilization of all city forces, and I just want to acknowledge the collaboration, communication, and support that we receive from each of these council offices here and your staffs in supporting the efforts and endeavors of the Emergency Management Department and all the public safety agencies and the Fire Department. As Mr. Ipsen mentioned, we worked closely with the Emergency Management Department and Aram Sahakian and his staff, and along with the Police Department in coordinating our efforts. That began with, number one, when we start to experience inclement weather here in the city of Los Angeles, all of our firefighters and paramedics across the city have first responder swiftwater rescue training. We add and supplement the equipment on all of our fire apparatus to include flotation devices and throw bags and other equipment that we utilize for strategy and tactics to remove people that maybe become encumbered in the water and in our channels. During this most recent storm, we had a citywide conference call that was coordinated by the Emergency Management Department, where we, all the public safety partners and other agencies throughout the city got together and coordinated our efforts and developed a strategy for how we were gonna respond specifically to the Fire Department. After that call, we have an internal coordination and planning meeting that includes a conference call with each of our four geographic bureaus. We develop a deployment matrix that determines what we're gonna do to augment our staffing. We talked to our regional partners throughout the surrounding counties in Ventura and Los Angeles counties. And on Friday, the 20th, we deployed, Thursday night, actually, the 19th, we deployed two swiftwater rescue teams in anticipation of the weather. Friday, we deployed an additional two swiftwater rescue teams during the day. Those teams rescued five... Those teams rescued five adults and one dog in three separate incidents from the Sepulveda Basin area. That was after the Police Department and Parks and Recs had already swept those areas to try and remove some of the homeless people that stay in those areas. And then Saturday, we experienced a little bit of a lull. And then Sunday, we anticipated one of the biggest storms we've seen in many years. And we had the most robust deployment of resources, augmented resources, that we've seen in recent memory or history. We deployed an additional four swiftwater rescue teams of four members. We augmented our urban search and rescue resources out in the San Fernando Valley. We deployed swiftwater rescue teams to Westchester, to Glassell Park, to Toluca Lake, and to Sherman Oaks. We deployed two Type III OES engines in the East Hollywood area, out in Pacoima. We staffed additional helicopter resources for Helco and what is considered our support members for those teams, the helitack teams. On that given day, just due to advisory, our swiftwater teams, in support of what the Parks and Rec already does, is we went out and swept the basins, and we removed seven adults and two dogs, just in an advisory capacity, from the Sepulveda Basin, again, on Sunday morning before the rains arrived. We also removed multiple adults in the Atwater Village Island area. And when the rains came, we had a number of rescues take place. In the Harbor Park area, your council district, sir, we had an unanticipated torrential downpour for multiple hours. And that resulted in the channel that fills that park at PCH in Vermont, with dense vegetation in that park, saw flooding that they haven't seen in probably two decades. Our teams responded to that on Sunday, rescued five adults via swiftwater rescue boats, inflatable rescue boats, and through pulling people off the islands. We had resources committed to that incident for about four hours. We did multiple searches of the shoreline, with multiple searches throughout the vegetation. Once we were satisfied that through hailing and through searching with our IR cameras and through patrolling those areas, that we didn't have anybody else there, we left. And then we were called back there again, late that night, probably Monday morning, a little after midnight, Monday morning. We committed resources, two helicopters with Night Sun. We used IR cameras and foot patrols. We patrolled the shores. We did hailing. We did audible. And again, we're, and that was at the request of the family from somebody that was missing, and we were unable to locate anybody using all that technology. And just wanted to add, our infrared technology doesn't see through water, so when that water rises, we can't see anything that's below the waterline. And so, what we found is that the Parks and Recreation staff and the staff that we have from the Los Angeles Police Department and our swiftwater rescue teams largely has been effective at sweeping those areas where homeless people congregate in the channels and deploying those teams. It was a big augmentation. Our regional partners did the same thing, and we found it to be overwhelmingly effective. We did have some bad outcomes, but not from our swiftwater rescue team perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Do you want to commend the heroic efforts of our Public Safety Resources, men and women of both the Police Department and the Fire Department? To be able to see what took place here with our media partners showing live footage of these rescues was just incredible and amazing. So, thank you for your hard work. Street Services, Greg Spots. Before Greg, I do want to recognize our Public Works Commissioner, President of the Commission, Kevin James, who I believe is here. Where is he? Oh, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner, for your presence. The entire Public Works Bureau, would you like to come to the table as well and offer some comments? Want to thank the entire Bureau again for their incredible work over the last 48 hours in the city of Los Angeles. So...
Please take, wait till he's removing his raincoat.
It's not a raincoat. It's cold.
It's not good for the rain. It's cold out there.
So, thank you, Mr. Rue, for that. Go ahead, Kevin, say a few words, then we'll head over to Mr. Spots.
Really, Councilman, just, I'd like to thank a few folks. One, the affected communities around the city of Los Angeles with their patients, and what has been a lot of hard work for our bureaus and for the rest of the departments. The Public Works bureaus, thank you to them for stepping up right away with first sight of what was potential danger, in partnership with the Fire Department and with our Emergency Management Department with Building and Safety. And I would really just like to ensure the council that the collaboration that took place of all the city departments, certainly for the Laurel Canyon area with the first affected mudslide that happened some 10 days ago, under the leadership of Councilman Rue, thank you, sir. And your team, your Chief of Staff, Sarah Doucet, it was 24 hours a day, seven days a week first, and the quick response and the collaboration, the preparation that our departments and bureaus did last year, preparing for El Nino, I think really showed through this year, in what ended up being the storm surge that we perhaps expected, you know, some 11, 12, 13 months ago.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Mr. Spots, we'll turn it over to you, Street Services.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Greg Spots, Assistant Director of the Bureau of Street Services, and I oversee the Street Maintenance and Urban Forestry Divisions, who are our main first responders in these type of incidents. I'm delighted to be able to tell you that I'm going to give you real-time statistics that are available to me on this tablet because of the MyLA 311 system that the mayor and council bought for the city. And Street Services was one of the early adopters of this new computer system. And we applied for an Innovation Fund grant. We worked through the Performance and Innovation Commission, Councilmember Bluman Field's Committee. And so, we have tablets in the field, and our first responders are updating the service requests as they respond. So, through this council meeting, I've been seeing changes in the statistics live from the field, because we have a paperless digital workflow. So that's a tremendous asset for us, managing these incidents, because we know exactly what's happening, even with pictures, in many cases, flowing in from the field. We had a very high volume of potholes, tree emergencies, mudslides, flooding, and palm frond requests, all the way back to December 1st. But those volumes increased again in the first few weeks of January. And then the last five days, we've seen a further spike in volumes to very high levels. And I'm going to provide you with a few of those statistics. From January 19th to 23rd, we received 507 tree emergency requests. All but 30 of them have already received a first response, and those came in yesterday. Those are some of the ones that came in yesterday. 304 of those 507 tree emergencies have already received the complete cleanup, and 159 have been secured but are waiting on the final cleanup. The mudslides really increased in the last five days compared to the whole rest of the stormy period. It seems that the previous storms saturated the hillsides, and this last two storms really caused a much greater volume of material to come down. We received 165 land and mudslide requests in the last five days. Every one of them has been seen, and a first response has been made. 65 of them are pending final cleanup, and 96 of them have been totally cleaned up. I think Councilmember Rue has 30 percent of them, along the Mulholland Ridge. And some of these require multiple truckloads of debris to be removed. I mean, one service request can be three or four hours of a multi-person team with heavy equipment. The scale of these slides has been, the severity has been quite larger than what we've seen through previous rains. Potholes have increased in volume progressively since early December. In a typical non-storm month, we receive about 600 to 900 pothole requests a day. Let's call it 20 to 30 a day. In December, we were getting 45 a day. In the beginning of January, we were getting 60 a day. And we've gotten 125 a day in each of the last five days. We haven't seen this kind of volume before. We think one of the reasons is there's quite a lot of damage out there from this two months of water. We also think that it's more convenient now to report a pothole using the MyLA 311 smartphone app or self-serving via the MyLA 311 website. We've done a few TV spots recently promoting the app for pothole reporting specifically. And we do see spikes in pothole reports immediately after one of those local TV broadcasts. So all those factors are driving up those numbers. We've received 604 pothole requests in the last five days, and another 112 this morning, as of a few minutes ago. Of those, 604 over the last five days, 200 are completed, and 77 still require an inspection. So that's the summary of how we're doing. We are keeping our service time commitments on almost all of these, except the potholes where we're not able to do two to three working days average, like we are in a non-storm time. But I hope to be putting some resources out in the field this weekend to do some, kind of a pothole blitz in the places where we weren't able to get to with the rest of the week.
It proves that technology, we can create some efficiencies and be more responsive to our residents. I'm happy to hear that My 311 app is alive and well, and folks are taking advantage of those service requests. Sanitation, we have our Division Managers who are here present, and I'll turn it over to our representatives from Department of Sanitation. I know in our, in my district primarily, in the coastal regions, the Sanitation Department did a great job of clearing our storm drains. They tend to get clogged up with the fons and debris that comes down in our coastal regions. So, I want to get an update on that and the response from sanitation thus far. Thank you.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Fernando Gonzalez. I'm the Lead Storm Commander for Sanitation. With me is Mr. Barry Bergren. He's the Collection Systems Manager. Sanitation went on wet weather alert status on Wednesday, January 18, at 10:30, in anticipation of the first of the three storms that hit the city. All divisions activated their wet weather preparedness plan. Additional resources were allocated on duty and on reserve. Three monitoring teams were designated for each of the storms, and a coordinator to exchange information with the Emergency Operations Center. Our Customer Care Center received 120 service calls throughout this period. All these requests have been fulfilled as of today. The wastewater system was able to perform even during the critical stages of the third wet weather event that we had. The hyperion water reclamation plan was processing 4 million gallons per minute. This is enough to fill 1,000 Olympic swimming pools. The Donald C. Tillman Water Reclamation Plan was processing 700,000 gallons per minute. The Los Angeles Water Reclamation Plan was processing 150,000 gallons per minute. The Terminal Island Water Recycling Plan was processing 300,000 gallons per minute. During this period, a power failure tripped the screen bars in the Headworth Facility. As a result, 1,000 gallons of storm water mixed with wastewater reaching onto Terminal Way. The stormwater system was stressed during, to say the least, during the wet weather event. There were a lot of challenges throughout the city, but more than a dozen crews were dispatched throughout the city to handle all the service requests. There were no major issues reported on our solid resources, facilities, and operations. Barry?
In addition to that, I'm pleased to report that there were no sanitary sewer overflows from the wastewater collection system over the weekend. We did have the one unfortunate incident at the Terminal Island Water Recycling Facility. That incident has, was cleaned up. There was considerable damage at the site due to the extreme flow and the unfortunate power bump. Crews are working round the clock to restore that damage, but they are still meeting all their permit requirements and treating all of the sewage at that facility. In addition, it's really the preparation that matters. We're pleased to work with all of the council offices and your staff when there's an issue that comes up. To date, we have cleaned about 55, we have performed about 55,000 catch basin cleanings. And there's 39,000 catch basins in the city. So, at this particular point of time during the wet weather season, we clean all the basins, and in particularly troublesome locations, we'll clean those an additional two times during the winter months, and it really helped out quite a bit. In addition, we do rely a lot on your staff to let us know the problem areas that they're experiencing, and generally, we're able to respond to those requests, if not within a couple of hours, within one working day. So the preparation and sanitation worked out very well. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. And now, I know the city experienced power outages, and I saw throughout my district LEDWP trucks. Thank you for your response to the men and women of the department. I ask that Mr. Seaworth respond and give us an update.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Dave Seaworth with DWP. And as we all know, the most recent rainstorms created challenges. And for the DWP, we experienced 97 incidents involving fallen trees or tree-related problems. With that comes wire-down problems, safety, public concerns. And so, I'd like to thank, right here is the LAFD and the LAPD for responding to those concerns, standing by, waiting for our crews to get out to those locations and make that, those situations safe. And also, Street Services, you guys are always out there every time we have a problem with trees that fall on streets and other related issues in DOT as well. So, thank you all for that. With that, we had 9,500 calls over the last six days. We had 145,000 customers affected. But I'd also like to report that over 96 percent were restored power within 24 hours. Also, the number of customers out during the peak of the storm was 22,500 at that, at one time. That was the peak. I'd also like to report that we have a public relations webpage on the LADWP website. Wendy Yanty, who's here today with me, has social media. She's in charge of also creating a Twitter updates on customer restoration efforts and communication out to the public. I'd also like to report that we did not have any injuries reported during that, to any of our employees during that time as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I think it was important for us to get an update from the departments before us in light of the recent storm and in preparation of also what's to come. And I believe this council took an effort last year in preparation of El Nino. I know it didn't, never arrived, but I believe those preparations and education, in educating our residents on what to do really helped us prepare for what took place over the last, like I said, 48 hours. Thank you for the report. I do know a number of my residents turned to Facebook Live to report the torrential downpour, the mudslides that were occurring on private property. Any of our departments, I mean, education is key here, and it's important for our residents to know that, you know, Facebook Live, yes, it does work, but if you're not reporting on 311 to any city department or any council district, then we know it's not happening. So with that, I encourage those listening and viewing that, you know, work with your council office. I know my deputies are out today, visiting a number of key sites and all of our main corridors throughout the district. And I do want to thank them for their hard work. I know all of our deputies are out and about within the last day or so. So, thank you so much for the presentation, Madam, Mr. President. Turn it over to you or any colleagues that may have some questions.
Great, thank you. We do have a couple on the board. Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Buscaino, for assembling this panel after these recent rain events. And we hope that we can have much more rain by the end of March during rainy season, but maybe not in the torrential downpours that we experienced. But we do need to end the drought in Southern California, so I'm hopeful for that. But I want to thank all of you gentlemen for reporting today on all that you're doing. And my field office feels really great working with all of you and all of your departments. And I want to just focus in a little bit on the swiftwater rescue piece, because that is very relevant in the 13th District, as the river flows through Atwater Village, parts of Glassell Park that are in the 13th, and of course, Allee's Valley. Now, we've done extensive outreach. We continue to do extensive outreach ourselves on the population that chooses to live on the riverbed. And I know that we work alongside you with LASSA on those outreach events. One of the things that... S A on those outreach events. One of the things that I get a lot after we see a swift water rescue from Atwater Village or Alleeian Valley is constituents suggesting that we do outreach in advance of the rain. So I'm here to say that we do just that most every single time, and our outreach efforts are pretty robust. But we have a very determined population that insists upon living on that riverbed, and we know that when these rain events do occur, that it, it really, there's a risk, a significant risk, to our firefighters who have to go in and do these rescues. So what, in your opinion, could we do more of to discourage individuals from choosing to live on the islands along the Los Angeles River?
You know, the fire department would echo your thoughts that it's a challenge, that they're very tenacious in their desire to live on those islands, the beautiful weather, beautiful scenery that you see in our rivers. But one of the things that we've observed with the lack of heavy rain over the past several years is, especially in the Atwater area with the islands, is the vegetation has been allowed to grow freely. And we haven't had a chance to observe that, but what, what the effect this most recent storm has had is washing some of that away that makes it less conducive to building colonies out there in the riverbed. We just, all we can hope for is that we continue our education efforts. We're certainly appreciative of what the council office does, what L A S A does, what L A P D does, what our partnerships with the park and rec people, and our swift water teams that go out and do those sweeps as well. We don't necessarily have the solution right now, but we're certainly continuing the dialogue. Our battalion commanders in the second battalion and the fifth battalion that work with your staff, we're continuing to explore new ideas and concepts and changing our response patterns, but more than anything, we've been highly effective. It is a high risk for our personnel to go out there and perform those rescues, and it does concern us, but we're not going to stop. We're going to continue to try and educate the people that live in the rivers. We're going to continue to sweep, and we're going to continue to go out there and rescue those folks until we come up with a better solution.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Buscagno, for bringing this forward, and all of you, and all of the city family that has been responding. I mean, this is a great example of city family pulling together. I'm thrilled that the tablets are finally working, are working in the field in a positive way, and I just, I look forward to that being expanded ever more as we can become more of a real-time delivery service in terms of all of our services, but street services in particular. In my district, I've been getting a lot of concerns about the potholes and some flooding. We had a particularly bad situation on Ventura Boulevard in Oakdale where the water is flowing into some of the businesses there. So I'm going to try to work with you all to get that squared away as soon as possible as we move forward in the budget. But in terms of the potholes, especially because I'm going to be speaking to some community groups later, I love telling people that we do these within forty-eight hours, which is our usual course of business. What can I tell them now? I mean, I know we're doing this blitzkrieg this weekend. Are we, can we assure people that if they report it, we'll have it done within a week? Is there, is there a timeframe that we can assure people at this point?
I think a week is a reasonable statement, with the caveat that we don't know how many more requests are coming and how many days they're coming at this volume. I've been at street services four years. I haven't seen a month where we had two thousand pothole requests, and we have two thousand four hundred this month, and we still have another week to go. So it is at a level that's, that's, that's greater than our capacity on a daily basis to meet. So I think you could say five to seven days for now, and hopefully that will quicken up again next week because we see dry weather ahead for ten days.
Great. It's, it's not just our roads, but it's also, you know, the Caltrans and the freeway onramps. We've been deluged with calls in the office, and I know reflective of what you've been getting through the, through the app and through the other reports. So thank you all for, for what you're doing, and keep up the great work.
Joe?
One last thing, Mr. President, and then we'll be on our way here. The governor this morning, or I believe last night, identified and claimed a state of emergency in response to the recent weather here in the state of California. So maybe Mr. Eppson can chime in on how do we plan on leveraging some of those federal-state dollars to address the recent, the impacts of this recent storm?
Thank you, councilmember. Yeah, we're well aware of that. Like I mentioned, I just had a meeting with our city administrative officer, Mary Rushell. So she's going to go out and there will be a memo going out to all city departments today. We need to know the type of damage, the resources, the overtime, all of the information, because we definitely want to get reimbursed for everything we can. So we will work with every individual department on that. That memo's going out today. And we not only send it to the general managers, but also the working emergency manager types, so we make sure we get that info quickly. And so that's, that's the process that we, we are very comfortable with, and we'll make sure we're very proactive in getting all the information back to. This all gets compiled, and it goes to the county, where it gets looked at at the county level and then submitted up to the state. And I think they're looking at possibly a presidential declaration.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues, for allowing these panel here to give us an update. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming on short, shorter notice than we had on the rains, for sure. So I appreciate you coming. And I just want to add to the chorus, though, one thing, is all the ones that aren't here, our first responders, and you guys did a phenomenal job, but the, also the pre-deployment that was done by a lot of volunteers, the Hope Team, others working with the homeless, going out, looking under bridges, going into all the wash and the systems and making sure that, that they were safe and moved. I really appreciate all the work that they did, because there's no question that lives were saved because of everybody's heroic work. So really appreciate the hard work and effort you guys have done. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, so with that, I'm going to turn it over. Is Mr. Sadio still in the room? I understand you have a number of motions you'd like forthwith.
Yes, sir. Items twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Forthwith, please.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, done. And with that, we're going to now go into, we're almost done with the meeting. General public comment. Arnold Sachs, still here? No longer here. Jacqueline Richardson, come on up. Tell you what, we'll just start calling the others as well. Helen Atay, Ken Minault, Darrell Gale, if you all want to start making your way up. Good morning, Ms. Richardson. Good afternoon.
This is a, this is a general official sample ballot for the general election November the eighth. And nowhere in this sample ballot could I find the name of the board of supervisors. Maybe it was just a zip code nine oh one four. I didn't get the sample ballots. I have no idea if it was a mistake. It wasn't supposed to be there. I didn't notice any pages missing. Also, on the official mail-in ballot, there was not the board of supervisors. Again, I don't know why that happened. I don't know if it was not supposed to be on that zip code, or if it was deleted, or whatever happened. I wanted to see it on the ballot. Oh, but that didn't happen in any other zip codes. It wasn't there.
Great, thank you. Next speaker, please. If you'd just please state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Helen Atay. I am a Granada Hills resident. I'm here to ask President Wesson or whoever else cares about us to help us to keep Aliso Canyon gas facility closed, because we're still getting sick, and that place is never going to be safe. The biggest environmental accident in the history of the United States has happened at this facility, and we still do not know the root cause of it. No one knows what exactly happened, how it happened, what caused it, and when it happened. And now they're telling us that place is safe, and they want to go back and open it up. When only thirty-seven out of one hundred fifteen wells have passed inspection after more than one year of repairs. After being misplaced for months from our homes and spending a lot of time in ERs and doctor offices, we deserve better than this. And we are asking you, especially Mr. Englander and President Wesson, to help us to keep this place shut down. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much. Ma'am, welcome.
Hello, I'm Darrell Gale, and I'm here to talk about my horror as to what's going on with Porter Ranch and the Aliso Canyon area with SoCal Gas. The, I don't see how we can ever trust SoCal Gas. The residents are confused. They have not, they've been betrayed by the regulatory agencies. People are still getting sick. A promised health study never materialized. When the aging infrastructure well blew in October of 2015, SoCal Gas called for backup and mitigation from Houston. Why don't they have emergency services and supplies for their aging wells on site? There's been no regular inspections and apparent lack of maintenance without shut-off valves. I am horrified by the amount of methane that has spewed from the SoCal Gas facility, and I beseech you to please do not let them reopen it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Thanks for coming this morning. Kent Minault, followed by Leah Garland, and then followed by Alexandra Nagy and Rosalie Hamt.
Hi, good morning. President Wesson, we need the city to support decommissioning Aliso Canyon. The state of California is-
Can you state your name again for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Dr. Leah Garland.
Thank you very much.
The state of California is rushing to reopen Aliso Canyon, and we need the city to take a stand. Thousands of residents are still getting sick, and we don't know why. The facility still leaks daily, and it will never be safe. SoCal Gas, in the last couple of days, has manufactured a gas shortage by restricting gas flow from pipelines out of state. And they are doing this to justify reopening Aliso Canyon. Today, they started withdrawing gas from Aliso Canyon, and this has got to stop.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Support Senate Bill one forty-six.
Thank you very much. Put a motion in for that today. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alex Nagy. I'm the senior organizer with Food and Water Watch. I just wanted to let you know, we submitted a letter to the city attorney and the attorney general today to call for an investigation into the gas shortages that have been going on the last several days. Based on our investigation, we believe SoCal Gas is manufacturing a gas shortage. Based on the winter action reliability plan they put forward in August, the state proposed thirty-one mitigation measures that would have readjusted the way the gas and electric system work to not need Aliso Canyon. Regulators were very confident that we would be able to get through winter without it. And instead, what we are seeing is that SoCal Gas is restricting gas flow on the pipelines from out of state. We're not even getting close to the one- and ten-year peak demand that they said could potentially cause problems. And so we're really concerned that they're doing an Enron situation here. They're manufacturing a crisis to pad their bottom line and reopen Aliso Canyon. Please investigate.
Thank you very much. And final two, again, Kent Minault and Rosalie. Rosalie here?
Oh, yeah.
Hi, good day. I'm Rosalie Hamt, and I'm here because I most desperately need help. I've been most severely violated, damaged, and destroyed by the management of the rental that I have. I'm living there twenty years under rent control, and they do everything to throw me out, all totally dangerous, totally criminal, criminal. One thing they did, from the outside, they flushed my bathtub full of sulfuric acid, full of sulfuric acid, and I'm lucky that I'm still alive. I'm under the most severe pain. Every second, they continuously, continuously do damage, total, total destruction, and-
It's okay, finish your thought.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead and finish your thought, ma'am.
I can't, I can't hear well.
Okay. Let me ask you, for your address, what's your, what is your home address?
Excuse me, I, I can't hear-
Sergeants, if we can get their, her address, just take her to the side, and we'll make sure we contact the appropriate council district to help her out as well. So if you can help her out. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. See what we can do to help, for sure. Okay. Sergeants, if you could just get her address, and we'll share it with the, and her contact information as well, we can share it with the appropriate council office. Thank you very much. With that, that concludes all the general public comp, colleagues. Do we have any announcements? Looking around the room, seeing none. Do we have any adjourn-
Excuse me, Mr. President. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Of course, yes, and we'll go ahead and post and refer those. Yes, thank you very much. We should just write that on the agenda. All right. And do we have any adjourned motions? We do. Okay, so if we can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise, please rise in council chambers for adjourned motions. Turn it over to Councilmember Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of William Joseph Garcia Deacon Willie, born in nineteen forty-one, to Gilbert and Juanita Garcia in San Pedro. He attended Dana Middle School, went on to graduate from San Pedro High School in nineteen fifty-nine. Before Deacon Willie became a man of faith, he supported his family by becoming a hard-working man down at the waterfront. He worked as an ILWU longshoreman for forty-three years, as a crane operator, clerk, and foreman, before retiring in two thousand and six. However, his greatest joy in life was a day of his spiritual awakening at the age of thirty-three. As a parishioner of Mary Star of the Sea, he became involved in numerous ministries, including Bible study and serving as a eucharistic minister. Soon after, he enrolled in the very first class of the Bible Institute at Loyola Mary Mount. He was later ordained as a deacon on June tenth, two thousand. He was also knighted twice as Sir Deacon William Garcia under the Knights of Columbus in the equestrian order of the Holy Sepulchre of Jerusalem. He is survived by his wife of fifty-five years, Luis Garcia, and sons William, Christopher, Greg, Jamar, daughter Renee Garcia, and nine beautiful grandchildren. He's preceded in death by his older brothers Gilbert and Raul Garcia, and his only surviving sibling, his youngest brother, Henry. Deacon Willie, he rests in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, do we have any other adjourned motions? Yes. Councilmember Sadio.
Members, it's with a very heavy heart that I talk today about Henry Walton. Henry Walton was the political director of local six sixty S C I U during my tenure there from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-six. Henry and I worked together for twelve years at S C I U. In the labor movement, we talk about this brotherhood and sisterhood, and so in that sense, yesterday I lost a big brother. Henry was an amazing man. He, just amazing. Today, if you think of the county board of supervisors, it's unthinkable that anyone could be elected without going through S C I U seven-two-one, that somebody could somehow be elected without the endorsement and the support of the county union. It's just unthinkable. But back in the day when we were working at S C I U six sixty, that wasn't the case. We didn't really have that political relevance or that political power until Henry came in to become the political director, and I worked closely with him as the general manager of that union. Henry was the innovator who came up with this COPE enrollment program that built a very modest voluntary COPE program into an army, a political army, that was funded, and that became the most significant political, labor political organization in the region. But he was more than that. He was a gentleman. He was a Renaissance man, a photographer. He told us he had once been in the Little Rascals. I think he once mentioned he was in the Harlem Globetrotters, or played with them, or against them. He was an extraordinary man. He was my diplomat. I could send him to meetings, and remember the time period, the social unrest in the early nineties, but I could send Henry to any hot community meeting, with the Brotherhood Crusade, or the Coalition of County Unions, or the People First Coalition, and Henry was the diplomat that could go there and survive, and come out, and stayed our position, and then make sure that our interests were protected. He was involved in the efforts of bringing Nelson Mandela to Los Angeles, involved in the efforts of Jesse Jackson's great campaign in nineteen eighty-eight. But I think the most- But I think the most, I wish the president was here, because I remember there was this heated campaign in 1992. It was Yvonne Burke versus Diane Watson, and the results weren't determined until about 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. Yvonne Burke, of course, bested Diane Watson. We were heavily involved in Diane Watson's campaign, and so we had to have this meeting a few weeks later. We had to come and pay our respects to Yvonne Burke, and we met with her chief of staff, Herb Wesson. And Herb Wesson had in his drawer a program, a leaflet that we had drawn up for Diane Watson. I think Herb and Henry were fraternity brothers, and so he brought it out, and he just kept giving her, Henry, a hard time. And then at some point, he said, okay, that's it. It's over. Let's go forward. Let me say finally about Henry Walton. He was the kindest man you could meet. Everybody, he was the most approachable person. And, you know, that's a tough job, being a political director for a labor union during one of the most tumultuous times of our city and our nation. And yet, Henry was one of these men that you just always felt comfortable. I feel bad because I saw him recently. We worked together on a radio show that he ultimately took over and had that show for years. The last time I saw him, we were like, you know, let's get together, right? Because he's retired, and I've got a new job. And you just always felt that you were just going to see Henry, and it was always going to be pleasant, and it was always going to be welcoming, and it was always going to be, you know, some laughter and some joy. And just had that assumption that, see him again. I took a late call late afternoon yesterday, and cancer is an enemy that unites us all. Cancer bested us yesterday, but the spirit of Henry Walton will live on through Local 660 SEIU, SEIU 721. He was a mentor to so many, many people, young people, old people. We lost a great man yesterday, and a man we would need today, but his spirit will live on. Thank you.
Well done. Sorry. Here are your loss. With that, that concludes the council meeting. We are adjourned. Be safe out there.